Yes.
Father, we thank you today for your loving time and the reminder to the members that you have been so gracious to watch and know us and be that you continue to watch over us and our community and all our students and these commissioners who react in your sake and goodness name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Ma'am, yeah, just a moment.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to pass these down. And what he did was just kind of give an idea for us to go by because kind of a mission, what and why is our vision? And looking at his goals, and my gosh, I was afraid he was going to do this as compared to what might or may not.
That's okay. It's okay. Thank you for doing that. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't have a wind on them, and I'm sure all the leaves are mostly here. So, alright.
Okay. The first part of this workshop is, of course, going to be our city manager's six-month goals. We do have on there public comments. I don't know if we have, if I open that up, would you? Okay, you're good?
No comments. I just have to be in town. I'm interested.
Well, thank you for being here. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close public comments, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Rudd.
Thank you. Thank you. So, what I've done is put together just a brief PowerPoint, and I wanted to sort of summarize really what you've accomplished over the last fiscal year pretty much, and then kind of what's in the works really now, and then talk about the goals. And if you all had a chance to email it out today, I apologize for sending it out at its last minute. These are really the kind of move-us-forward goals. They don't include, you know, signing checks and personnel issues and just the day-to-day operation kind of goals. These are really the kind of redevelopment and moving the community forward goals. So, what I started with is kind of listing the things we've accomplished. We contracted with the Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement, contracted with Clarion for financial services, as well as to review and improve our systems, contracted with Inspired Technologies for IT services, and we review and improve our systems. Those are really kind of bringing us into sort of modern age of those technologies. We filled the finance director position, filled the administrative assistant clerk position, filled the city attorney position, filled the city manager position, traded and filled an accounting clerk position, contracted with the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council for a grant-funded update, a comprehensive plan, which was well overdue, issued an RFQ for architectural services to renovate the city hall, and secured ownership of the Masonic Lodge, and most recently, we adopted the budget for the coming year. Now, what's sort of underway is some of the today, determining where to allocate American Rescue Act funds. We're going to be contracting to comply our ordinances. We're currently scanning our ordinances in. It's a long process of finding all the way back to eighteen whatever when we started. We're going to put all that in a digital format so we can bring you prices to do that. Workshopping the ambulance station question, workshopping the park signs and fines issue. Those were issues that have pelted over. Designing renovations for City Hall. We're going to show you design on the fourteenth of preliminary design. Issued an RFQ for planning services. That deadline is tomorrow. I've already received two submissions for that, so it's good news. Issue an RFP for branding and marketing. I've received four submissions. That deadline is tomorrow also. Completing the IT upgrades. Almost complete. They'll have a report for you on the fourteenth. Implementing the finance department recommendations, which we've been doing. You'll also have a report on that on the fourteenth. Proceeding with the FERDA funded improvements of Fletcher Park. We will be able to get a firm that can do the survey for us, boundary survey, so we can get a letter to receive on that project. Launching events for utility billing. We're going to do that. Push that back a little bit from October one to October fifteenth, so we don't have the pressure of end of the year at the same time as we're switching software. Improving the landscaping in City Hall, as well as catching up on landscaping maintenance citywide. So, what's next? Looking forward, six months really isn't a lot of time, and I've already been here a month and a half, but I really looked at kind of what I thought could accomplish or have well underway within that time. So, develop and adopt a strategic plan. I don't know if it'll be finished by that time. The goal will be to finish it before we start the budget process in March and April. So, I believe will be finished by end of February. Hire CRA Main Street Manager. We're advertising that now. Facilitate the start of the Main Street program. We're going to have a public meeting pretty soon to kind of start gathering public participation. Complete the update to comprehensive plan. We'll actually submit those updates in January to the state, and then we have to wait till the state sends it back with any comments, address those comments, and then adopt it. So, that may happen in February or March. Complete the complication of our ordinances and have them available online. I think once we pick a firm and send them, that'll happen relatively quickly, and then residents will be able to research all our ordinances or resolutions, everything online. It'd be very nice. Contract with a planning firm, not only for ongoing planning and zoning duties, but also reviewing and updating line of development code, reviewing and updating architectural design standards, and other duties as assigned. So, as we have things that we decide we want to look at, we'll have a firm under contract. We can either have them come in under that hourly rate, or we can have them give us a price for one sort of a one-time service. And that's under organization, these sort of internal operations, promotion, which is, and I forgot to mention, I always like to organize my work around that Main Street approach, just because it's a very comprehensive approach. So, under image creation, marketing, special events, as I said, we have an RFP out for branding system for the downtown and a marketing strategy. So, with that, we'll have the tools to then budget permitting, do pole banners, wayfinding, web presence, and so forth. Then we'll also facilitate production of new and ongoing special events. I think events are going to start coming back now that the pandemic is settling down. And so, we'll provide, we can offer them branding elements. We can assist in marketing those events for them. We want those events to be successful, so we'll do that. And then, as the main street organization formalizes, forms, the promotion committee will create a work plan of events they want to start, little monthly events or some annual events, and we'll be a partner in those events and facilitate those success of those events. I'll go through this, and then we can go back with your questions. Design, which is the physical regulatory environment. Want to increase the landscaping maintenance. It'll be easier now that the growing season, I think, has probably come to an end, getting caught up in enhancing landscaping. Of course, we're going to apply for funding for water, wastewater, septic sewer, and gas projects ongoingly. The big push for that will be in the spring. They'll open up the grant cycle for community development block grants. So, that may actually open up after this six-month period. We're going to design the improvements to City Hall. Hopefully, we'll have, be able to do a little bit of those improvements in the coming fiscal year. We'll implement facade improvements downtown. I'm going to bring you some recommendations on improvements to the buildings downtown. With Photoshop, we can show you what those will look like. Complete, and then these are repeats, complete the complication of our ordinances, because part of that is our being able to research our design standards and so forth, as well as having a planning firm that can update our architectural standards for downtown. And then economic vitality. Those side improvements are repeated here because that's an important part of the downtown's vitality, improving the building stock that we have, and then facilitating redevelopment of the infill sites downtown and the former Miller property. I'll have a presentation for you on that on October fourteenth. And then facilitating business expansion, which could include outdoor seating areas, subdividing some of our larger spaces into smaller or reasonable spaces. Streetscape improvements in front of those businesses, as well as marketing assistance. We can help with existing businesses, and as new businesses come in, help them with their launch, and raising public awareness that they're here, that they're open, and so forth. So, I think that's. That's the, my last slide, so I'll open it up for your questions.
You're going to like mine a whole lot better. I'm going to start, I'm going to start on this end with Commissioner Burton. Are you ready? Do you have any questions for Charles at this time? Anything that you want to discuss?
Do you have a strategic plan kind of starting, or do you have any ideas?
For the commission?
Yes.
We've picked some areas that, for instance, when we start gathering public input, will be tables. And so, if you want to talk about like service provider, which would be water, sewer, drainage, fire, any services, that'll be one such area. So, you'll have a goal about the quality of the services we provide. And then one will be community development, which will be economic development, historic preservation, housing, those kind of community issues. There'll be a sort of a quality of life, which is recreation, special events, waterfront. So, out of those areas, you'll develop very sort of broad goals. How do you want to improve those areas? And then under that, a few objectives, you know, so for instance, easy ones, always talk about parks. We want our parks to be beautiful and clean and serve our residents. Then objectives might be, you know, how often we mow them, and we may plan some new playground equipment for Part A and Part B, and Part C, get some bathroom, you know, some more specific things. So, we'll start with those bigger goals in these sessions with you, and then we'll, over the months after that, we'll narrow it down into specific objectives.
Okay. Those sessions are going to start as part of the public?
Yes. We'll kind of get the public to go put their input based on those areas. It helps us organize it.
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll say to you, there was a lot of comments about bathrooms in the bar or sidewalks. A lot of people are saying we want more sidewalks. So...
We want this done within six months, then?
I'd be good to have. And then every year, we revisit it just briefly, and it kind of sets us up for our budget process. We know, like, we got the sidewalks in the budget somehow, you know, whatever those big goals were that we heard a lot about.
And I would encourage everyone with strategic plan to look back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when the regional council came over. And there is a report, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good sized report, but look back on that too, and see where, see where the community was at that time, and where the commissioners were at that time, and where we are today. I mean, they didn't, you didn't implement it, you didn't do anything really with it past that, but I do think that's important just to...
This will be much better than that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's very wishy-washy.
To see where we were and where we still are.
And that's what I don't want.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Is that all for right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, ma'am.
What are you seeing?
I want to see our city get cleaned up. I was just looking over. I think I see, you mentioned something about that. And your goal.
Increasing maintenance. That'd be the physical environment. Getting the autumn or summer growing season. We could add something about general maintenance or...
Yeah, general maintenance. That would be, because I think we slack on that. Yeah, we kind of slack on that, and that's some of the things that I think people look at when they're thinking about moving into a town. You know, how creative. I ride, I think I ride too much around this town. Yeah. And it bothers me where I see scrubbery when the leaves left the branches.
Miles are still there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I don't know whether on our part or our trash haulers are...
The yard debris?
Yeah.
The states are too.
Well, it's not. It's small piles too. You know, I had made a suggestion quite a while back that we, on Friday evening, when you get a little slack time, when the grass is not growing like it's growing now, maybe we do half a day or so many hours on roaming the streets and picking up scrubber. But I think the trash haul is supposed to pick up.
Let me go and direct. They're not supposed to pick up little miles. We're supposed to have them in bags, and people aren't doing that. And our problem is they have a lot of area to cover, and put it in the bag, they'll pick it up then.
So, maybe that's something Commissioner Banks, as you're going, as we're continuing with your discussion, in that putting some of this back on the residents as well.
Yeah. Maybe we need to do it, but maybe we need to let them know by putting it on now. We got to wait until you can put it on to the deal. I mentioned that one time before. The schedule of the garbage pickup and the schedule, because I got people in areas, wait till the garbage truck comes in, they put the garbage in. And that makes our, if somebody rides through our town on a Saturday and see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really, I had temp, I said, no, I'm not a temp to do that. Stop by and tell a couple of people my thing. But I don't want to get in trouble with the people.
Sure.
By putting it on to the bill, attaching on that bill. Just a friendly reminder, garbage pick up on such and such a day.
Yeah, on social media as well.
Yeah. A lot of people really don't know. I find a lot of people don't know. They put out what we call white goods. That's old settees, old, where, old appliance, old tapers or anything. You put a column when you do that, and they don't do that. And so, they stay there, stay there, stay there, stay there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also heard that they, they don't pick up yard debris in the commercial areas. So, for instance, here on Central, there were a couple of piles of branches. It's commercial zoning, so they don't even come down here to get it.
That was my next, I was approached by individuals wanting to know why they don't do that. Well, I couldn't put up with the answer.
I would imagine they want commercial that have a dumpster.
I don't know about that. I know commercials charged, they're charged individually.
A higher rate, I think.
Yeah, they have to have a commercial account with waste products. I don't, I don't know.
So, if I could get an answer to number two, because I could get back to those people who would ask me that, it would really help me. For right now, that's...
Okay. Commissioner DeVita, did you have a comment on his before I moved to Commissioner West?
I did. Two, two things, but...
Can you hold off to your time?
Well, I'll save one for mine, but one is really important, because Commissioner Banks raised the issue of they're not picking up the plant waste in current areas.
Okay.
The, some of the businesses on Central Avenue don't like the fact that they have to pick up palm fronds that fall off of the trees that are actually in the right way. I don't know what to do about that. I've always picked up palm fronds where, when I had them in front of my home. But I just wanted to, I don't know if that's the same people that are approaching Commissioner Banks, but it's been mentioned to me by my personal neighbors on Central that, well, they want the trees scalped, which would probably kill them. Right? So, I don't know what we do about that.
And that's something that Charles, we talked about, we talked about that earlier, so today.
We'll keep an eye on the personal.
Okay. Commissioner West?
I'm going to... Bump off on what you said. Okay. There are areas in town where two cars cannot pass because the overgrown vegetation is out into the street. And that needs to be trimmed up because, first of all, it's not attractive. And people that are mowing the grass around the town, letting that part, it's little overgrown oak trees, et cetera, et cetera. And in Hubbard Park, do you know where I'm talking about?
Hubbard Park?
Uh, Lakeview, north end of town.
North end of town.
Oh, the dog park? No.
No, no, no. It's...
To the Lakeview. It goes down to Lake Crest.
Okay.
The divided street.
Divided.
Oh, Lakeview, yes.
Okay. If you go to Wendy's and across that road that goes down, there's a little triangle in the middle of the road. It is just overgrown, and no one's taking care of it. Why not take it all down? It's, nobody's trimming it. It should be trimmed when it was Hubbard Park. Let's see if we can't just level it.
It's on Lake, Lakeview?
No, that's the street over this one. There's one near the land. It's a little castle.
It's around Castle Lakeview. It's one Castle Lakeview. The very last one in the north process.
Right. If you come right out of Wendy's, you'll run right into it.
Okay.
Yeah. It's right there, and it's just a little area, and she's, I run around it all the time.
Yes.
And it's overgrown, and...
And it's hard when cars are coming around it to see who's coming or wherever. And it starts to appear sitting along with. And I don't know, I don't believe there's a housing H O A or whatever, in Hubbard Park, and nobody man can't, it's just overgrown.
So, it's the entrance then to?
To Massillon.
Well, it's not an entrance.
It's a, it's more of a merge, that you're coming down, and then you can merge onto Prospect there, so you can go this way, or you can go straight, and...
See, there's a little triangle. Come out of Wendy's and come right across. You go this way, or this way, and this way, or your right ear.
Okay.
It's all overgrown.
And it's dangerous.
It is dangerous, and I don't see why we can't just take a little bit of this.
Straighten it off.
This grass thing.
Was it landscaped in one form?
Yes.
Well, there may be a tree in there.
Oh, it might be a tree.
Yeah, under the vines.
Right.
I believe there is a...
Oh, so it's a map, so it's pretty big.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's big.
It's just been over around for years.
I noticed them.
Maybe, maybe a nice tree to save. Sorry about that.
Well, you can't really see it right now. It's just...
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
And East End of Warren Javon, the little service station there, and whatever, it's overgrown above the sands of the street.
Okay, on Orange.
Right.
Orange goes east-west?
Yes.
Oh, write down the word voice to manualize.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's, it's... Right, but it's a block down.
Okay.
There's a little station running, and I feel JD Iceberry's house also is property on that end.
Okay.
But both sides are overgrown, and they're into the street.
May I just?
No.
Yeah.
We're talking about that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's stay on this, we'll stay on this subject for a little while, and then we'll move on to other subjects. So, yeah.
Commissioner, you can answer this question for me. Why do you say we're on Moonlight Street and now you're in Crescent City? Over there by the Methodist Church?
It was because when they were having problems, when you come out, you can't see because of the church. It's right on the street, and there are so many accidents, people coming out and getting brought inside in. So, we decided years ago, let's make it one-way. You can come into that service station or come that way and blow off that end of the street.
And guess what? People use it for a toolie.
Well, that's true.
They do.
But I was just curious why that...
And then this church...
When nobody's looking, when nobody's looking.
Most of this church used to have steps that went right down to the garden.
And then they switched it, so...
And then they built four-way, you know, and they chopped it off. That's why it's so funny looking there. It was really pretty, but it had their majestic steps that went down to a nice sidewalk. I remember it was a little...
And was, was that when they put the, the one-way there, was when it came to?
No, that came later, after we had so many accidents. People kind of pull out, and it, you know...
That makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I was just curious. I've always been curious about that, you know, just the one, one-way, right?
Okay.
Well, this, well, doesn't, part of it, I think part of it has to do with the taking away of the parking on...
That's what she said. Well, it's kind of says that, because the stairs came right there.
Two negative effects of changes to seventeen. They needed, it could have been two-way, instead of had right turn only, but they needed the space for parking on the side street, because parking was generally from seventeen. For that.
Okay. Commissioner West, do you have anything else right now? You want to finish up with this?
I, I, yeah. No, I think that's, that's it. I want to, we're this beautiful little city between great water, and we're a critical town, and I'd like it to just be clean, cleaned up. I know the street department's gone, ah, but not just in the winter time. I'd like to see it continue through the summer too, year-round where it's...
That'll be our job. I think we'll catch up with the winter. It'll help us catch up. Even edging and curbing everywhere.
Yes, yes, because they do a lot of edging in the winter, but they can't do that all summer long too. And people are supposed to do it, like we edge on our street. People don't. And what we have to do to get them to do that.
For me, landscaping is so important, so tangible with change, you know. A lot of things are a mystery, like who will develop the Miller property, who will open a shop?
Right.
The landscaping, right? We can plant things that bloom and beautify and within our grasp, and so satisfying, step back.
But that was nice. Yes. Okay. Okay, Commissioner DeVita?
Okay, sure. My phone doesn't ring. I was trying to not silence. I've told my original goals. I have some comments about some of your stated goals. And then I had some things that I wanted to add that are more operational, but I think have been kind of lagging or not been attended to, so I think are important. On the organizational part of your goal, and like Commissioner West, I'm going off of what you originally sent us.
Yeah. This is something that's kind of pasted from that, so...
Right. I didn't, I didn't really have time to look at the one with the nice bullets. I'm still not a hundred percent sure. Wait, this is promotion, sorry. The second heading, promotion. I'm, I'm still not convinced. You've done a good job of tying it to convince me. I'm still not convinced that we need to just brand, and certainly not just market downtown, because downtown is very small, and so many important elements of our city are not downtown. And when you're talking about pole banners and wayfinding, particularly wayfinding, to me, there are so many elements of our city that we need to help people find their way to besides downtown, including our historic water. And, you know, the recreational, just the recreational facilities, the businesses. So, that would be my comment on that. I raised it when you did the proposal for the marketing, and it was going to focus on downtown, but I'm just very concerned, particularly since the money for the marketing is mainly coming from the CRA budget, correct?
Yes.
So, and as we discussed, many of our businesses in the CRA are not specifically downtown. So, to me, I would really like to see us, you know, market more than just downtown.
Can I just get up and pause this for a little while?
So, I, I can address that, and I'll, I'll put more of my cards on the table.
And I, and I, before we get, go down this road, that was a check, and, no, I didn't, hold on a second. Let me, let me finish. Before we go down there, these are his suggestions for the goals that he wants to start to establish. A lot of these, while they're six-month goals, I still think some of them are long-range goals.
I agree.
Some of these with the marketing, with the branding.
We just get started.
We're just getting started, so we'll have an opportunity to weigh in on that. I think right now, it's more, let's give Charles some direction. This is the direction we want to see you kind of go into, and then we can work these as we go. Is that fair?
That's fair. And, and truth be told, in a couple of communities I've worked in, and same here, I never know if the city, the logo is sacred. Many times, people just, you know, want to keep it no matter what, and it can derail a process, a marketing process. So, Maitland, and actually even in Newport Ritchie, wanted to focus on the downtown. We're looking at the marketing... Um, Maitland and actually even in Newport Ritchie, um, wanted to focus on the downtown, we're looking at the marketing downtown, the brand. Don't know how the community will respond to touching the city logo. Uh, in Maitland, their logo was fifteen years old, but put together by a committee. And uh, it was a jumble of things, many, many icons in there, ours does have quite a bit of stuff in it. Uh, but I wanted to leave it alone, I made it clear to consultants, I'm asking you to look at downtown, not the logo, not the citywide logo. Cause I didn't wanna just get sidetracked and have it all blow up um, over some controversy. And then the resulting product they produced, uh, everybody loved it and they adopted it citywide in both instances. So that, that'll be available to you, you'll really look at it and go, you know, this is, this is really, really great, this represents the community, we wanna adopt this as our new city. Logo, you may, you may keep this one as our official seal and documents, or not, when they, they'll, they'll, they'll show us a seal, we can adopt, it's more up-to-date. Um, we'll have a tag and so forth, and then you'll get to make that decision, like, yeah, let's, this is downtown. Uh, we wanna keep what we have for the rest of the city, or you may say, you know, this is a whole new day in Reston City, we love this new look, we love these colors. We wanna, we wanna take this on completely and completely, we'll just roll it out and, and move away from the uh, the older logo. So you'll get to make that decision when you see the product, and you say, that's a good marketing logo, but this is our seal and we're gonna keep that on our.
And it could be something that, like you said, that the entire city might embrace.
Yeah, and, and both those other communities, even in Placa, um, um, they adopted, they adopted it more slowly, uh, it's our nature. But there was an overwhelming response of like, wow, why would we just use this downtown, we should use this everywhere, there's so many things like it. So, um, their, their Placa script they use now, we see it all over everything. So, uh, I think that's the opportunity of this and um, uh, it may need at the, the, we have thirty thousand dollars, I think, in the budget, we may, we may need most of that for the. I'm looking at proposals that are coming in, we may need most of that for this toolbox. Uh, but then we'll be able to roll most of it out virtually, which won't cost us, will cost us little or nothing. Um, but it's, it's really well worth it.
Okay, Commissioner DeVito, you wanna continue?
Um, yes, and as far as marketing goes, um, I think I've said this before, but you know, we're down five hundred, we're down twenty-five percent population, which we used to be and we have all these big blocks. Uh, I'm hoping that marketing will include marketing for people to live here, I, I just wanna mention that. Um, some things to me that are operationally important in terms of our six-month goals, um. Some of them are very basic, uh, but assuring that our charter provisions are followed and our ordinances, um. That for sure needs to be done and hasn't always been done, we have some elements in our charter that are, that are just completely overlooked. Um, one thing I would like to get is the um, the slides that you have. Um, one item in our chart says actually that the city manager every month is supposed to provide a detailed report. Of the, the activities of the city and the finances. I, I don't think that the verbal report that we've always received in the commission meeting really fulfills that. I would love for you to take a look at it. Um, because it actually says the report to the commission and the public as the complete activity. And the bullet points that you've done here, to me, really are um, kind of an approximation of that and would be so useful, you know, like a, a monthly update. Um, as well, and the finance area, um, we have um, quite a few contracts now. We have Clarion, we have Inspire Technologies, those are both new, we have the sheriff as a contract. Um, we are spending quite a bit on the finance budget now and. Uh, I think it's important to keep the commission up to date on where we are on those contracts and particularly Clarion, cause that was originally. They said they could do it for six months. So to me, and this is along with, I know the budgeting and spending would be to me an important goal in six months to keep us updated on those contract progress. Um, as well, um, well, and you said vision statement and goal, and I just wanted to say to Commissioner West, um. I have been thinking about the vision and I like this very much, um, it's something that goes through my mind. A lot, and I think it's beautifully stated. Um, in addition, uh, an operational thing, uh, it's my understanding that our longtime city manager did not. Schedule or have evaluations for supervisory staff or department heads.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, that's what I was told, the commission didn't evaluate the city manager and the city manager apparently did not evaluate the department heads. Um. So that is kind of an important operational thing, um, that I think might, you know, improve operations. Too, because the commission now has, has the responsibility, which we've really always had, to evaluate the manager. Um, so I mean, that's just, I'm just taking note of things that just really have not occurred. Um.
I had H R this week providing with the anniversary of every employee, just like that.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just leaving that with you, that really doesn't mean that.
Okay, okay, we do.
I, I just wanna move right, and then um, one thing that Clarion mentioned when they first did their presentation. Was cross-training of staff for essential functions. You know, cause we are so small.
Hmm.
Um, that was in their initial proposal. Um, so to me again, that seems to be something that um. Would benefit us.
True.
Um, and hopefully the pandemic will wind down, but you know, anything can happen. Um, and then as well on fiscal accountability, there are two issues that other commissioners raised. Um, one was, you know, people not keeping up their yards and not, you know, not putting out the yard brush on a white day. Um. It's just, it occurs to me that as a small city with our current finances, we, I don't think we can afford. To do everything for everybody and it would be useful to, I think. All of us try to figure out a way to have a public education campaign and a city pride campaign. Because really, as Commissioner West said, I mean. They do their own edging, et cetera, et cetera, um, a lot of people do their own mowing and edging out to the curb. Some people can't, but some people really do think that the city should do it. And I don't think we can afford that, because we've discussed how hard it is just to do the, the public right away. Um, and, you know, in terms of um, in community participation and pride in our community. But that may be something that we can, um, that we can try to work for. Um, and when you mentioned sidewalks, that's been on my mind for a while. Because we have um, we have a pretty harsh sidewalk law.
Yeah.
That is requires, I'm just listening.
I know, but I, but I, I'm gonna, because we are limited in time, and so what I wanna share is a lot of this stuff's over strategic planning, a lot of these things that you're bringing up. Sidewalks will be part of our strategic planning, this is more, this is what we're looking, Charles, for you to start to direct. And so some of this, um, and some of this he's already started, like I know Clarion, they're coming um, on the fourteenth as you requested, they are gonna come and they're gonna give a report. We'll find out where we are, he already is aware that we want that monthly budget update that we have not been getting. And um, so I think some of this is, um, I just, you know, if it can be on the strategic planning side, let's kind of, let's try to keep it there.
Well, I'll, we'll take that off, okay. Um, the other one, I think, if this is back to the financial, uh, we've discussed the gas department. Um, I think that's important to keep on our radar, the progress of the gas department, um, for solvency. And. I think the mayor's already mentioned that um, it was her goal to have a, like a quarterly review of our budgeting and spending.
Uh, no, I want a monthly.
A monthly, well.
I wanna know where we are monthly.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, and that ties back into our charter.
Yeah.
Because it really does require a, oh, and in terms of the monthly reports, something Commissioner Burton mentioned. Was at a prior meeting, um, the way we get the finance report now, it shows the money that's in the different funds. And at a prior meeting, um, the former finance director, Debbie Peacock, explained to us how all those funds work together. It's complex and Commissioner Burton said very, um, I think wisely, is there a way to show us that? Uh, in other words, maybe whatever works are done, could we have a more graphic, easier way to understand? The relationship of those city funds to each other, cause there's a flow of funds and.
Layman's report is what I'm telling them I want, and uh, for you and for me, like I think in terms of the funds.
And for the public.
The cash account, the completing account, like, general fund, like, I wanna know what's in the gas fund, the general fund, the C R A. And there is some cash, available cash, it does move around because um. Like if something for the gas department, it needs the cash account, which has the general fund, you know, it's, I don't understand, I don't speak accounties, but I understand what you're saying. I wanna have a report to you, even the summary of this year we're finishing today. In layman's terms, of the funds and where's our total amount, where our money is in total, what funds, what's in the condition of those funds.
But, well, I think the part that Commissioner Burton and I will kind of zeroing in on, she started first. Some of the funds, the money is taken in and then it goes from one fund to another fund, either as reimbursement or to, to be paid out. And that's the part that I think could use a more user-friendly depiction.
And, and we've met, Charles and Robin and I, we have met with the, um, our bank on this. And they are working on a proposal now to take us down from those fifteen, fifteen accounts to possibly six accounts, seven accounts. So it's better so that we can, you know, and, and this is also important for the general public, so that anybody walking in. Can look at this and have, maybe not an in-depth, but just a general understanding as to the standing, where we are in the, in the city. So as we go forward, it's no surprise if we can't do something. Or, you know, um, and, and we have it justified and all along, they've been able to know that.
I think part of the confusion is the terminology, so the money may come in, it's deposited in one account and then moved to another account. But from a fund perspective, meaning the six funds.
Yeah.
It doesn't move around, it stays in the fund, it's in different account, that's what's part of our communication issue and our reporting, like. We have all these funds, the, how many, how many, those are really accounts, they're not funds, and each fund has several accounts and. So we'll get the terminology straight, so it's um, uh, well, and my goal is to present that to you. Ongoing way, you know, the status in, in terms of the six funds, rather than the, whatever bank accounts we have.
I think the one thing I'm hearing here, um, over and over, and that I absolutely agree with, is that somehow or another, Charles. And this is gonna be through, you know, your help, your guidance, um, that the city gets their pride back. That our community starts taking pride in themselves. And um, there's a lot of things that we would like to do, we'd like to be out there, um, cleaning up the sidewalks, we'd like to be out there taking care of the curbs. We're limited in staff right now, that doesn't mean in the future we won't be, but somehow or another bringing this back, either we do it. Through the churches, through some of our, our organizations, our community organizations, but we start working with people. And bringing that sense of pride back, and I think, um, you know, any recommendations, you can come back to us. I know you're learning the community, it's hard for you to come in here today and, and I appreciate, these are very lofty goals. I appreciate you bringing this to us, seeing that you've only been here a month and a half and you're still trying to learn which park is which, cause we have a lot of parks in this community. We have, uh, you know, for, for, as small as it is, we have a lot of streets and knowing, you know, which one needs grading, which one doesn't, which one needs work. Um, and so I think my, my big thing for you is to become as familiar as you possibly can with the community. Um, and with the needs of, of the city, you know, ultimately. So that's one of the things that, that I'm gonna be looking to you, and I know you've already, just in a month and a half, you've been very thankful of what you've, what you've already done and, and um. You know, Commissioner DeVito on that, he gets phone calls, what you've gotten, a couple of phone calls just recently with vacant lots, where people are looking to develop. You know, and build homes.
Yeah.
And, and we've seen new families come in, I was out the other day and there were two new families and they have children. And it was very encouraging to see people wanting to invest in the community. And I think as the city invests in the community, as we invest in this community, the residents hopefully will follow suit. So.
All right, can we just add to that a little bit? You know, one, one thing, um, that Commissioner DeVito mentioned, and I s, I, I agree, but, but I sometimes, I somewhat agree with you, it's, it's kind of a combination thing. Um, but she mentioned how, uh, that she just, you know, we shouldn't just market downtown. Uh, that, you know, we have a bigger city and, and every time I hear that, I, I kind of smile, because it's only two miles, it's a two-mile radius. And, and I'm from St. Petersburg, you know, and um. So anyway, what I, what I just wanted to say is she's absolutely right, we do have a larger city, but um. Charles is calling, who says, if you start to. Get downtown in order, if you start to make downtown something, it, it just, it will just catch.
Shut out.
It will catch and it will catch quick, and with only two miles wide and two miles, you know, is all we have, I, I think it, it would be surprising. How quickly things, uh, how people do get their pride back. And, and so I think, you know, again, it's, it's two ideas, but um, starting downtown, I think's a good place.
Same thing happens when somebody starts to clean up their yard and paint their house, all of a sudden the neighbors are starting to look at their house in a different way.
Exactly.
And they start, and they start doing, it's, it's a trickle effect.
Yeah, I am, I am looking, I just remembered, I wanna mention, um, I'm getting really anxious to have a, the first, the man who started all community meetings to launch the Main Street program, so. Maybe the first Tuesday in November, uh, look for calendars, um, maybe in a high school auditorium, if it allows, the middle school auditorium. Um, we may find that given people's schedules and concerns, we may have to hold a series of informational meetings, um, to gather support, uh. Maybe not, maybe the first meeting, you know, will be full house and.
What are we having, oh, we already have a meeting on the first of November, don't we?
Uh, well, you are doing a, a strategic planning.
Yeah.
This will be just for the community to come and see a presentation on what the Main Street approach is, how an organization works. Uh, the approach, how it functions.
Okay.
And not to do much more than that, uh, begin to provide information to the public. Uh, calendar.
Can we come in and we'll be?
Yeah, you're welcome, we, we would, we would notice that there may be uh, two or more elected officials present at the meeting.
Can I, can I tell you what we have meetings?
Hmm.
That would be November second.
November third, when do we have the strategic?
November third, yeah, that's, that's the public one. Uh, you guys are welcome to come in, but it'd be the public writing down their, their feelings about those areas we talked about.
You know, I wonder if we should, I mean, I, I know that when they did the regional, when you did the regional. Was it the first meeting that the commissioners were not there, there was one of the meetings the commissioners were not there, I thought. Was there?
I thought there were two.
Was there two?
Yeah.
And it might be good, because it might, if, if we're not there, I mean, I don't know.
Free to just.
They might feel more free, yeah, yeah.
So you're gonna take the third off, uh, but on the second, it'll just be a.
As long as they don't talk bad about it.
The second will be just introduction, explain the approach, I have a slideshow and.
Yeah.
Um, get people talking about it and, and if they wanna give us their contact information, begin to collect a list. Then maybe do another one on Saturday, that people can't come on a weeknight or a weekday and, um. Take it from there.
So this is Main Street?
Main Street, yeah, this would be to, to begin to provide information on the Main Street and the, and the approach and the.
So we're not coming November the third?
I think it's the commission, I think we as a commission should think about that, what we wanna decide to do, I don't know, maybe we need to do it here, we can do it on October. Um, at our, at, when we have an actual meeting, we can take a vote, um, we can decide then, but. Do you know, I was in Deland Saturday. I grew up in that area, okay, I watched Deland when there was nothing downtown, it grew, then there was nothing, and then what it's become, and what it's become today. And there is such a sense of pride, and it, just like Commissioner Burton said, they started. And there is such a sense of pride and it, just like Commissioner Burton said, they started with the downtown area. They redid the downtown area, all those side streets, it has spilled over into the side streets. So all that housing outside of the downtown area, you start to see all that redevelopment, all those older homes, people are going in and fixing them up. But you know, downtown Deland Saturday, they had a little, they had a little art show, it's a third of what it used to be, just based on where we are today. But there was people everywhere and they were enjoying it, they were walking up and down the streets, they were eating in the restaurants. Um, you know, and it just was, I, I, just as I sat there and I sat outside and just watched the people, um, it, it just really, there was, there's a sense of pride that they have there and the people that are downtown that are operating those businesses, you can just tell that, you know, that there's just a, a sense of pride that they didn't have before. And it's, it's just a really neat experience just to, you know, go downtown.
Well, I know myself, like, um, just to give you an example, you wanna talk about people not picking up their garbage and things like that, you know, I have a neighbor, um, know them very well and it's really good for everybody to get to know their neighbors. Uh, but for the life of me, I don't know why, they just allowed, there's picket fence and they just allowed the garbage on the side of the picket fence to the road or the street, just to be littered. And of course, it was worse with the, the Miller Elementary, cause the kids would just eat a candy bar, throw the paper, you know, drink a bottle. And so finally, when I felt that I knew them well enough, I thought, I said, what you, why you letting, you know, your whole lawn looks great except here. And the answer I got was, it kinda surprised me, well, the, the city owns that. And I said.
That's the attitude that they are.
Yeah, and I said, really, I said, you know what, every time I walk by this house, I said, I look at it and I say, what a beautiful home and boy, does this lawn look crappy. And it immediately puts a, a, you know, a distaste in that and I said, this is your, this is part of your home, whether you wanna, we do or not, you should pick it up. That's about all I said. It's been cleaned ever since, but, but some people don't realize what they're really kind of showing, you know, and they just need to be told.
Well, and what they're responsible for.
Yeah, what they're responsible for.
What they're not responsible for.
But I thought, I found that funny that it was the, the city's problem.
And, and Charles, this is something too, if you could, I mean, I think all of us, even though this is part of our strategic, it goes more into the strategic planning portion. This cleaning up the city, but just being, become very familiar with and have it open up those discussions with Waste Pro. Um, I know they've been going through a lot, tomorrow is their, you know, their day and I'll tell you, they were out there today in droves, picking up, picking up stuff. All of out there, um, but just talking to them and also talk to, if you would, I'm, I'm gonna put this in here as more of a, I guess, in the design maintenance, um, get with Nicole Grace, with Keith Putnam, beautiful. Um, because we only do one cleanup a year and one cleanup a year is just not enough, we don't have enough volunteers to really get out there and make, um, to clean up the entire city. We can clean up a little bit here, a little bit there, but we don't clean up the entire city and maybe that's something that we should be able to do quarterly or, you know, every six months and get people in, involved a little bit more and of course, that comes into, so I would ask you that, you know, as part of that, just, you know, I know you know a lot of these people because you've worked with them before, but just reintroduce yourself and, and, and make sure that they know that we're looking for some assistance.
I have one more thing, Commissioner West.
Boy, Deland was beginning to start like years ago, what they did, well, whoa, that corner, so they had planted plants, big pots and pretty plants, I love that, I wanted to do the, these four corners, the next four corners, but start with this four corner right here. I will plant them if some of the city can buy the pots and plants, I'll take care of that, I'm good at, alright.
Alright, that's what that improvement line is for, I do think we have, I think there's land, I've been told there's irrigation out there, that's key, uh, we could put a.
Well, that's up and down the street, but this is big pot, like a big pot like this and so high, there's pretty plants and, and it's on the concrete on each corner.
Oh, we can still feed a, we can still put a tube in there to get water.
I don't know if we can or not, I don't think we have that capability, but I have jobs.
Okay.
Commissioner DeVito?
Yeah, two things, um, cause we're talking about the need for people to do more. Um, just like Main Street, there are programs to encourage neighbors to get involved and that was my point in bringing up the citizen part, I think that, um, this is more something that the city really needs to keep in mind, that that is incorporating ways to get the citizens involved and having pride in, as Commissioner Burton said, their home next to, you know, their neighbor's home and there are, there are programs for this and it creates civic enthusiasm. And then, um, one thing that I have on my list is, I really think, um, that Crescent City needs to make a concerted effort to provide good communication with the citizens in terms of excellent customer service. Um, on the garbage issue or just, you know, we used to have a newsletter and I know hopefully we'll get this new person on board. Um, but Crescent City, um, used to do a better job of communicating about all kinds of things, like when your trash day is and why the trash isn't being picked up or what the city is doing now, we used to have a little newsletter. Um, and I think that hearing from the city will establish those lines of communication and maybe make people more receptive to, you know, our message about, hey, come out and help and try to make the city better. So, um, that, that's something that I would like to see us try to do is, is good customer service and good communication.
Commissioner Banks?
Well, you know, I, I'm worried about the deal. I think everybody within the municipality, air water, it might not all have gas, but we could put a flyer. And it won't cost us anything, but it's a sheet of paper.
And.
Just print that on and do, a lot of people is not aware of some things that are going on in the city. And I think by sending out on the water bill and those things, make, will make them aware of what's going on. And, and I really thank a lot of people, cause once I told this lady about when the garbage actually run, she's not putting it out there on time.
I think that's a good, I think for right now, that's a very good suggestion because you can put it into, we've done that before, we had to put an announcement, I think we did cops, kids and pious and that.
Exactly, right.
And we did it that way and that gets to everybody, so it's not, you know, it's not social media and, and, you know, it's not through our website, but it just gets to everybody.
And they stuff the envelopes and.
Yeah, they add it to.
I think we have a folding machine, right?
We do, we have a folding machine, they just add it to the, um, to the thing and it folds it and so there's just maybe even some bullets. Just some easy bullets, some updates, so that's a good, and I think it's important, Commissioner DeVito brought that up, that, that we, you know, we try to be as transparent as we possibly can be, you know, and make sure that the public is aware. Cause a lot of times, you know, like Commissioner Burton said, they weren't aware that they are, it's just a general reminder, just a general reminder, please, you know, everybody, your curb to your, your house, you know, it's your responsibility, please take pride in, in, in your garden and our community. It's just those easy, easy suggestions, you know, and Charles knows how to do that better than anybody, I think.
And you know, on three oh eight with schools, uh, it, it just took me to stop by there and tell the fellow that mows the school properties, I say, hey, do y'all understand that the city had come and cleaned up behind y'all? They wanna know what did that mean? I said, well, when you mow the grass and the blade, it hit it out toward the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, blowing it out to the street.
And, and yeah, I, I say, the, the city have to clean that up. And then they started directing it the other way and they cleaned it up.
And for that's a COVID issue, I know sometimes handling to address that.
And that is, and that's, you know, that's opening up again, those communications, like right now, the library desperately needs to be mowed. And that's just being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, Mr. Sucks, what's going on, our library needs to be mowed, you know, um, those are the types of things that I'm, that right now, as you become more acclimated to everything, um, you know, I, I would like you to just, you know, open up those communication lines.
We want you to work big boots.
Yeah.
It's top of the line.
While we all.
Okay, Commissioner Banks?
I really would like to, uh, I don't know, but I know for sure it is, and I'm not, I'm not that forgetful yet. Uh, that, uh, Mr. Kennedy, and I hate to keep on bringing up his name, but he was the manager during that time. And he came back and reported to us about, you know, the light I told you to look at, coming into Crescent City area. And, uh, that the people told, told him that it wasn't in the budget, but they were gonna put it in the budget. And like, like it was okay, that it's Crescent City deserved no light, the lighting coming into town, like other communities there. You can almost come in any other town, I'm gonna shoot for a prime example now. Uh, but Lucy kinda just built a, a new school, uh, between Seavale and Pearson. And it, it is lit up.
Yeah, you didn't want to know what's going on there, you don't know if it landed or something when you're driving through there at night.
Crescent City, when you come in it, it's dark.
Yeah, I did the research on that, it doesn't show up on any of the work.
It, it don't show on, on.
I, I, I'm good.
I don't know who would enjoy doing that, uh, uh, that department, but I'm pretty sure, but back again, making reporters on it twice.
There, there was a lot of, uh, there was a lot of public, uh, you know, people didn't want all those bright lights, I can't remember some of that, I was new to the area. But there was a big to do about not having those bright lights.
Right, cause there's an issue of, like, losing.
But north of town is where it's mostly needed.
Yeah, that's probably, okay, from start, from Winn-Dixie, I, I meant from Lee-Hardley. That's the road train into Winn-Dixie to three oh, uh, three oh eight, to Brown Avenue.
Yeah.
It, it would be very helpful, very helpful, if we could put the lighting on both sides, like other cities get.
Open up those communications with, with them, Commissioner DeVito, and then I'm gonna wrap, I'm gonna wrap this up and.
Yeah, um, I, I think we all just jumped in when we started, I don't know if anyone said what a great job you did with your goals. I know the mayor said some compliments, but, um, I just feel like you've been a very positive, breath of fresh air. And I think that you've learned the community in an incredibly short time and I really appreciate, um, the organization and the thought plan that you brought today, I think you made it very easy for us.
I gotta agree, Charles, you just come in, run in with it and I, I think you ought to take mine and not yours.
And thank you, Commissioner West, for the effort you put into that, you did a very good job. Okay, Commissioner Burton, do you have anything else you want to add?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Banks, you did?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner West, Commissioner DeVito? Now, Charles, let me ask you this, you, you've heard from us here, do you want to bring kind of anything back to us? Because, you know, as we go through goals and objectives that we're gonna have to, you know, do the performance appraisal on.
I'll incorporate your comments and I'll shoot you out, email a, a result.
Okay.
And we can tweak it if we need to, I, I did wanna mention, um, the one goal I'm hearing is so key, the, it's getting the Main Street program started. I have like four pages of, of projects and ideas, um, that are possible, I think. Within a mainstream organization, you've gotta kinda see what, what people are willing to invest themselves in, so you can't tell them, do this festival. But just ideas that I think would go great, um, for this community, so once we get that rolling, I'll be able to, what about this?
One type of CRA, yeah, cause there's, you know, once you get that person in there that can help you, that even if for some reason we don't, we're not approved, or, you know, this first year for a mark down, I mean, from Main Street, it's still that model is something that.
We can operate this, I mean, we can't use the name.
Yeah, but we can, we can certainly operate on that, we know it's a successful model for all of us and that's something that also will bring in that community sense of pride because it has to be part of the community buy-in too. So, so thank you, thank you, we look forward to the next four and a half months.
Oh, thank you.
And we thank you for all that you're bringing to Crescent City because you two and your family are making a big investment here. And, and it doesn't go unnoticed, please note that.
Thank you, Congress.
Thank you, okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn the workshop, if everybody's good for that for right now, we recommence at five thirty.
Yes. Hey, I'm gonna go ahead, we're gonna open this workshop back up at five thirty on the dot. She?
How you all doing, maybe you guys are having me back tonight?
On.
As we talked about previously, um, we had a short time, Commissioner, to discuss this, y'all wanted to come back and discuss it, get into the weeds a little bit, so to say, bear with me, as I mentioned a minute ago, I have a sinus infection going on, I have to wait through the meds, so if I gotta stop and pick off or whatever, that's where we're gonna be at. Um, before we get talking a little bit about, um, personnel up front and then we'll get into some other stuff after that. Um, we've got a little bit of a slideshow for you guys. Um, this first one, uh, it's Commissioner DeVito that asked about before. This is basically, I just put together a short, brief summary of our calls. And what this is, is, um, our responses and kinda what we've missed and then what we ran. The last two years has been dictated by COVID, so it's really not accurate to what we're being dispatched at. The premise of this slide is to show you for the last, probably fifteen or eighteen years, actually, we've been dispatched over a thousand calls a year. ISO and all recommendations recommend anything over seven hundred calls a year, be a full-time paid fire department. Um, so all these years, we've been doing this with volunteers and stuff, just to kinda let you guys know, we've been making it work. But it's not going down, you get some days, some years where you have nine hundred and seventy calls and you're right back over a thousand. But like I said, anything over seven hundred, they recommend a full-time paid department, so that's what this slide is. Uh, through yesterday, we were at seven hundred and seventeen calls, so we're right on track to be over a thousand again this year. So, um, one thing is, is the steadily, the percent of missed calls, the majority of those, I will tell you, are like nursing homes and doctors' offices and stuff like that. Uh, fire calls and things like that, very few, less than one percent of that, anything that's being missed is mostly a skilled facility. Cause the guys, they don't, they have the option to not respond to the skilled facility, that's pretty much why. But I also count that as a missed call because we didn't run the call that we were dispatched on, just so you guys.
Hold on just a second, are we on, zoom's on?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's right, yeah. Um, this sheet here, um, you guys have had this in the previous one, uh, like we were talking about, all the yellow ones are people that live here in the fire district. Um, the blue ones, we got a medical, you know, medical leave, these are only the vials, since, um, the people in white all live outside of the county. They're volunteers, they still wanna come back here, they started here, they moved away to find work, yet they wanna come back and try and dedicate some time. But it's hard for them, finances, family and everything else, and that's kinda why I'm here discussing some of this stuff. The people in green on that sheet is three paid day guys, Monday through Friday. And the people in orange on that sheet, which is very hard to see on your sheets, I know, um, is fill in. So if those guys are off, they all work for a paid service somewhere else, if they get held up on overtime or something, these guys try and fill in. So we typically have some backup in case our, our, you know, our, uh, paid guys are there and we're short on volunteers. Daytime is really hard to come up with volunteers. Little bit of what we do up here. I'd allow myself to drink right. Training, we'll talk about the volunteers a little bit and our personnel. Any basic training or any required training is provided by our department or the county, pretty much the county puts on response and all the training other than what we can't teach, cause I'm a, I'm a certified instructor, I have a couple more in the department, we can teach a lot of the basic classes. But anything that they go beyond that is their responsibility to maintain the certification. For me, my instructor, I have to take at least two classes a year to maintain an instructor certification on top of everything else and I have other certifications. Um, but the minimum required by the state is twenty-four hours a year for the very basic on fire and it's. And it's forty every two years, I think, for their EMS. They have to renew that every two years on that. Um, and I have some hours and stuff like put together for you if you need them, but, um, it's, it's a lot of hours is what we're looking at on this. The next three sheets here, we're talking about, we're getting into some of the personnel stuff. And this kind of gives you some ideas. Some recommendations I had, I come up with some volunteer options to try and put together a way to get more active, active and get more coverage without being a paid fire service completely. Um, volunteer option one here, if you're there for more than twelve hours, we give them a hundred dollars a day. Um, and I set this up where you would only pay three people. So it doesn't matter if there's six or eight people there, the first three to sign up, they're the only ones that would get paid in this instance. Everybody else would be there, and then less than twelve hours, you would get seventy-five dollars. Now, you're not getting both. You would budget for the highest part, the hundred and nine, and expect to pay somewhere less than that. Cause you're not, I'll be honest, you're not gonna get three people there, probably hardly ever, other than the weekends. Uh, Monday through Friday, if these people were working there at their houses, you might get one, maybe two will show up here and there. Um, but getting three, almost unheard of through the week. Now, I'm not saying they don't come in and stuff, but getting them to come over and run and do things, um, that's almost impossible.
She, this is in addition to the, the guys in green you had at the.
Correct. This is in addition to your paid service. What I'm trying to do is, it's over the last ten years, the entire county's taken a hit trying to get volunteers. It started down here about ten years ago. We started losing people. Uh, people were just aging out. We had a lot of people that were off this department that were getting older and couldn't do the work anymore, didn't wanna do the work anymore, and were moving on in their lives. The west end of the county had a lot of younger people at that point. Now transitioned to where we're at now. They're having a hard time finding volunteers as well, so the whole county is taking a hit. That's kind of why we see Director Grimes taking the stance to move, we had four paid people at Satsuma. He's moved those people around. There's two in Satsuma, there's two in Georgetown. There was four up in, um, East Placa. He's put two of these Placa and two in the west, and now he's moved people around to try and fill gaps and get coverage. So that's why we're seeing a lot of this moves right now. We can't get volunteers. It's really hard.
The volunteer, it, it's training, it's the training that they have to go through. I think that's probably one of the.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's part of it. Um, I have here, I have on one of the sheets over there, the hours that we're looking at. And it, it's crazy. I have the paid versus the, I think I have the paid versus volunteer hours.
It's on page six.
Well, my sheet here, I have, I, I broke this down for you, kind of give you an idea too of what we're looking at for what your volunteers get. So for your volunteers, what they go through, it costs us almost six thousand dollars a volunteer to send them through fire and EMS school. Okay? For a paid fireman in the state of Florida, full-time like myself with my other career, I ha- I have a minimum of eight hundred and fifty, fifty-six hours. For a volunteer, it's four hundred and seventy-six. So it's not that much different, and they still have to maintain their certifications, just like I. Um, and they'll have to do that, working their primary job with the family and everything else. Um, but that kind of gives you an idea. Each volunteer for the very basic training is about six thousand dollars a person. Doesn't include all the extra gear and stuff that we have to buy and purchase for them once they're done with the training. That is the rent here for the training. Once they're done, set of gears, three or four thousand dollars. So it gets pretty pricey pretty quick. So getting somebody in and then losing them, it, it gets expensive. You wanna try and retain these people, but you can't. Um, this is one option here. Second option, if they come over and give us four hours, fifty bucks. Uh, right now, we have an incentive program that is worked off of percentage of calls. The problem we're having is the volunteers come over and give their time. They may come over here and give us six or eight hours. And then maybe you've got two or three weekends in a row and not get a call during the timeframe that you can be here. Well, then it deters them from coming back. They're like, how was over their last two weekends and didn't have a call the other day I'm there? So why should I go back this weekend? You know, and that's one thing, that's where I'm coming up with this. So op- option two, fifty bucks. If they show up and give us four more hours, now they're not just sitting around. They're, they're checking trucks, they're fueling trucks, they're putting water. If I got stuff for them to do, they can go test hydrants and things like that. So they're putting in some work. They're doing training. We have online training that they do in their station as well. Um, volunteer option three, kind of similar. We're just changing the timeframes around eight plus hours, less than eight hours. Same thing, you budget for the highest, expect the low, expect somewhere in between. Um, once again, I highly doubt you're gonna get three people, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, but you always gotta budget for the highest amount you can budget for. And those are, you know, some of the options I'm looking at there. You know, I, like I said, I, I think trying to incentivize your volunteers a little bit more to get more people here. It may draw more in. It may get the ones that we currently have over here more often, um, you know, just give them a little bit of money.
Basically, you have four hours on option two, and then you have eight hours on option three.
Yes.
What do they average, I mean, what do they typically, what does a typical volunteer average?
Everyone is different. Somebody may come in after work. They may get off work at five thirty, and they may come in and work and sit there from six to midnight. And maybe six to, till the morning. The other one may come in at two in the afternoon, because they're off that day, and they may be there till midnight. Everything changes. I have some that ride during the day, some that ride in the evening, some that are overnights, some that will come up and do a Friday till Sunday morning. It just varies.
And this would just be, this would just be regardless. You're gonna, regardless you get a call or not, you're gonna get paid.
I'm not, I'm not gonna get a, I'm not gonna say, hey, you run one call, you gotta get the money. No, you gotta come up there, give me, effort, give me some work. And I would do a sign-up sheet, so the same person's not getting it, but if we're not filling that, they would have the options to sign and fill a void.
And I might be looking, I might be, um, but with that, and that's not a contractual, do we treat that as an employee? How do we treat that from a tax standpoint?
So just like your, your current services you have now, as we get into this a little farther.
Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
We'll get into that a little bit farther and discuss that. But I just kind of wanna show you other options you have here too. You have your part-time paid people. We could increase their hours. We could add an extra person for coverage as well. Um, you, you could add a day and an evening shift. You know, you could split that up, say, two people, one's coming in, you know, seven to seven, and one's setting, you know, what, you know, work at different hours, twelve hours, eight hours. I threw some things in there.
Go ahead. So then, now we have one man on duty, and we get a fat call. Now, do the volunteer, meet him.
If, if they are around, yes, sir, they do. A lot of them will come to the station, get a truck and then respond.
Right.
Now, I asked them all to come to a station and get a, get a truck instead of driving in their vehicle, but they are allowed under the county rules, the state laws, to go to the scene of the fire or the call and help out. If we're already en route and it's a, a basic medical call, by all means, they can just come over to the scene. It's a fire call. They, they know they're supposed to go get a truck and respond to the truck.
But now, unless when they're certified, they, how can they participate once they get on the scene that they're not certified?
If they're not certified, alls they can do is watch or hand us equipment. And I only have, I only have one person at this time not fire certified, and they're EMS certified. So they typically run EMS calls and on a fire call, that, that person would help fill air bottles. They would get us water. They would help, you know, get air packs and gear off of people, let them cool down. There's a lot of stuff to do, other than fight fire on a fire scene. Fighting fire is about ten percent of what goes on on the scene. Everything else is all dictated by everybody else that's around. You know, just like everything else, you know how it is, you know, there's so many jobs that go in to make that a whole event. Um, but I'm just throwing some different options out here, so you can see some of the prices of what it would cost. Um, if you upped your, your paid guys to two guys or twelve hours and stuff like that, moving into full-time. If you wanted to move into a full-time paid department, which is what is recommended by ISO, cause you're over seven hundred calls a year. Um, I took basically fifteen dollars an hour, which is what we're moving to and running the numbers off of that. And gotten salary estimates from the county of what an employee plus benefits cost, and that was around sixty thousand dollars. And so that's where the sixty thousand dollars came from. And so that's where you got all your numbers from there. Um, and that goes up pretty quick. And of course, then you have to have all the equipment and everything to maintain that as well. My recommendation is option two at this time, anything more than four dollars to that. It's a basic step. It would start you into the process. And you could always grow, expand or change from there. It would give you time to figure out what we're gonna do. How we're gonna fund this, how we're gonna move forwards, what you wanna do with the fire department. Do we wanna keep trying to do volunteers? Do we wanna add paid with volunteers, or whatever direction you're looking at? Mr. Rudd here added this in there. What we're looking to do, and currently volunteer incentives are thirteen thousand dollars a year. And what that would do is this program would replace that, so it offsets. You'd take that, subtract the thirteen, to get what your budget, you know, the impact of your budget. So it'd be about forty, forty-one thousand, or four thousand dollars additional to that budget.
Okay, so Jason, are current your budget, as I understand it, is a hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty?
Yes.
That provides what we have now. So this would be in addition to that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you're proposing we would begin it like right away, or whenever we could figure out how to fund it?
I was talking to Mr. Rudd earlier. My recommendation would be try and, try and start something in January of some form, if you can. If we can't, we have to wait till next year. I understand the budget's been set. It'd have to be a minimum of the whole ninety hours.
I've not seen, I've, you know, ever since Ralph and I moved here and heard your presentation, we've been very in favor of recruiting the fire service.
Right.
But we have to figure out how do we do that?
Absolutely.
And so you're saying potentially January?
That would be my recommendation. It would give you guys a few months.
In a perfect world, that would be about.
In a perfect world. I believe that in a few months, you guys will know a little more of what you're gonna have and things like that. And it would give you at least an idea to say, hey, can we do this? Can we not? It's gonna give you a few months to look at it and see if it's even a possibility at this point. Um, I'm not gonna say, hey, I wanna start now. Of course, I wanna start now. Of course, I would like number one option. Give, get, the more money you give them, the more people you're gonna get over here. It's just that simple. Um, in the finance world today, with everybody, families, you know, that's just where it's at. Yes, ma'am.
So when you say come over here, these are out of county people, and they're coming mainly from any particular?
Flushing County, Flagler County. I mean, a lot of them started as volunteers here, living in this county, in this city.
Right.
And have, had have gone elsewhere looking for work. And once they started their work, they actually moved to where they're at. Now, I do have a couple that are out of county that were never here. They just wanted to volunteer and help out. They work in this profession as a paid service somewhere else. And they just wanted to come over here and help out and volunteer and, and get a little bit more. Some of them work EMS side only, and they don't get a chance to do any fire, so they wanna come over here and help with fire too. Um, and it helps them gain knowledge and things like that as well, and it helps us out in the process. And you're getting a skilled person that's doing this full-time somewhere.
I have one more question there. Is that okay?
Yes.
So is it really not realistic to try to further, do further recruiting for volunteers locally? And the reason I ask is, I don't ever see any publicity about that, but I have no idea, you know, what, how that's done.
So the local recruiting for the last five or ten years has been done. We go to the school every year and do career day. Um, we were putting it on our Facebook page for a while. We have, that's been not quite as active over the last year or two with COVID. Um, the county does things out at different locations. They do, they've been down here in front of Winn-Dixie before. They go in front of Lows, Home Depot and different places, and they do recruiting events, trying to get people to come into the volunteer system. Um, the biggest problem is, like I said, what you're looking at is you got people that need a minimum of about five hundred hours of school to work around a schedule of their forty-hour work week and whatever shape, format is, plus their family. A lot of people, once they figure out how much school they need, they're out. They're just like, I, I just can't do it. They're interested. They come here and they go to a few meetings, and then once they figure out, oh, man, I need to do all this school. And it's not just Monday through Friday. It's weekends and time away from their family, and then they realize man, holidays away from their family, and this away from their family.
Is my math right? That's like the equivalent of over twelve weeks of school?
Yeah. There's multiple classes. You have a fire class, you have a medical class, you have a wildland class, you have a driving class. And I can continue, I have a pumping class, and there's multiple ones. The bare minimum is fire, driving, EMS and wildland is the very bare minimum, which is, which is four hundred and seventy-six hours currently.
Right, and they don't necessarily got to pay for that, but they're, that's eating up their.
Correct.
Time when they can make money or do their own.
The, the county pretty much sponsors all of those classes, the very minimum requirements. Plus, there's other online requirements that are required, that I didn't add into that, probably another twelve hours, online classes. That's required to be a firefighter as well. So like I said, there's about four hundred, almost five hundred hours of school that's required before they can really do anything with us. So they're, they're basically somebody that can come hand us equipment until they get this training.
That's, that's a high, that's a hyper.
Yeah, Commissioner Burton. I'm just looking at your numbers here, and, um, you have the option two, which is, let me see if I'm getting these numbers correct. Three people, four hours. Is that four hours a week?
No, that's if they show up for four hours or more.
Okay, so four, okay, so that's a shift. It, does that, is that applied to one person?
So, so what I'm looking at here is the maximum amount of people we're gonna pay in one day, twenty-four hours, is three people. So you can't get two people come now, four people come later. It's not how it works. We'll do a three-person sign-up. The first three that sign up for that, they get paid. Everybody else that shows up is just a volunteer. They don't have an option to sign up.
So we're capping at three every day.
We're capped at three.
We're capping at three every day.
I, I would love to pay them all.
You can get five, you can get five people there.
I would love to pay them all, but, but I understand.
So, so we have.
Fiscal responsibility here for the city. We can't pay it every night.
So this is three people every day?
Three hundred and sixty-five days.
Okay, and they're, each, each one of them is four hours?
Or more.
Or more.
Yes.
At fifty, at fifty bucks an hour?
No, no, that's fifty dollars total.
No, total for the three.
The day.
For the day.
Each person, fifty dollars per person, per day, for three hundred and sixty-five days a year equals that fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Tell her what happens if they come and they, and they, and there's, they respond to one fire. How much do they get paid? They have a, there's like a stipend.
Well, by us, they don't get paid anything until they get ten percent of the call volume.
Okay.
So, so basically.
The county has, has stipends for eight dollars a call, and we can look at a dollar per call if you want, but I thought this would be easier because.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just working through this. I'm understanding how, I, I just, I'm.
Everything is a max of three people.
Three people.
And that is a total dollar amount, when you see the amount.
Fifty bucks a day?
Fifty dollars a day.
So it's a hundred and fifty bucks a day?
Yes.
When you got three people.
Yes.
And that's times three hundred and sixty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's where you come up with the fifty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then down in volunteer option three, you, you're kind of doing the same thing.
Absolutely. They're all the same. Every one of them are the same, it's just different hours.
Okay, so I see what you're saying.
Just different hour requirements, yes.
I got it.
Got it?
I, I got it now.
It, it's confusing, and I was hoping I could explain it a little bit better, but I didn't know how to put it in a paper.
And that would be better for at only four hours, knowing because of their schedule.
Yes, and that's why I threw the four. Initially, I didn't have, when we did the commission meeting, I didn't have a four-hour option in there. But I got to looking at the people, the times I had along, but where they sign in every time they come over, it's full. Show Dog with me, so you can see it tonight.
Okay.
And, yeah, and they're here, and some of them can only be here a few hours, maybe two hours, maybe five hours, you know, so.
I was just trying to give the guys doing eight hours plus more money in my mind.
Yeah, no, and, and that's what I would love to see, you know, if they're wanna do that, I would like, and we can set up some type of step thing. If they do more, so more hours, we could do that down the road. I just wanna get something for you guys that is fiscal responsibility on my part for the city that gets them some more money, but yet still is affordable for you guys to do until we can figure out a funding mechanism in the future.
Okay.
And so we can go through this full-time. Like I said, my recommendation at this point is option two for this. We've talked about that. Um, like I said, recommend option two. I think it's gonna be the best thing to help retain, you know, for retention for the volunteers. Um, we're just struggling for over five years now of trying to get volunteers. I took in, over the last three years, I think I've taken in seven or eight applications, and only two of them pass a background check. I've retained one. The other one decided it was too much classroom and stuff like that in the middle. So that's, that's the biggest, you know, headache right now, is trying to be affordable with this. And, and this is a reimbursement program. That is, that is what you were asking me earlier. What it is, is just like what the volunteering center does now. It's a reimbursement program. We're not paying them to, to run calls, we're paying them for the service to the city and stuff like that, for pack purposes and things. They're already, most of them, all but one right now are already getting paid for the incentive program if they're running enough call volume. So you're already seeing that. That was the current, how it was thirteen thousand. But the problem is, is when they have availability, sometimes they're coming over, there may be one or no calls. And then when they leave, five calls the next day. So a lot of people aren't getting compensated anything at all for donating. for donating, you know, five or six hundred hours of time to the city. And I was just trying to help do some reimbursement for their fuel costs and things like that. And that's kinda what this program is, is a reimbursement program to help compensate their fuel costs and food costs, because they come over here and they buy food and they, you know, they do stuff here while they're here.
Have you spoken to any of the volunteers as far as what they would, how, how they would feel about that?
Most of them are in favor of anything, because right now, a lot of them get nothing. I've spoken to all but maybe one, and they're all in favor of any form of improvement that we can do at this time, so.
And also, isn't, I, I thought JR, aren't we doing something with the school board as far as a training program out of a school? What are they, what are they, are they proposing something? I know not down here, but, but
The, uh, well, the school board, what they did is, they went in with a grant with the school board about three years ago and purchased a burn trailer. And that burn trailer was specifically supposed to be used to teach high school students about fire safety, and they put a program, the other teachers into high school. Flushing County did that about six years ago. They ended it two years ago, funding and mechanisms. It's hard because you have to have a certified teacher head the program, and you also, and, but they can't teach fire stuff. You have to have certified fire instructors, and you can't just be a fire instructor. You have to also be a live burn instructor to do any of the burning as well. So there's a lot of components to that. So they worked on that, and last year, they were able to finally put it together. And they're starting to work on doing that where they can, as they come in as a freshman, start in the basic fire setting. And by the time they graduate high school and turn eighteen, they'll be able to go sit for a state test to become a state certified firefighter. That trailer is also open to us, which will have, they're doing a live burn this weekend, which Jeff back here and a couple other of my volunteers are actually going to do training in that, in that trailer this weekend. So it's open to the volunteers to use as well, but it has to be done through them for the insurance requirements and for the state requirements of the grant. Yeah, they are working on stuff like that as well.
What, what you asked? So Jason, are you saying that the program in Palacca in three or four years, that there will actually be Putnam County High School students graduating eligible to take that state exam?
Yes.
But then they will be likely to be seeking a paid job?
Yes.
Potentially?
Yes.
If they, if they do all that high school?
Correct.
They will be wanting?
That, that's how the program is set up?
Right.
To be established as hopefully as they come in, just like when you do, so what, what was it? The dual enrollment type stuff? It's kinda set up like that where when you come in as a freshman, that is a curriculum of part of your, you know, it's not a requirement, but it's an additional curriculum
Right.
that you would take, and by the time you're done with high school, you would finish that. If you was to go to school and do that straight through, it's three hundred hours for the basic and five hundred hours for the full-time pay. So if I was to go to a college right now, I'd do five hundred hours of school, about three or four months, and then you would graduate with that same thing.
They're gonna, they're not gonna be able to help us unless we're going to actually
They have, they have to be eighteen as well anyway.
Exactly. So I'm saying, when they graduate, they're gonna want a paid job.
Correct, but they would, but on the offset of that is it takes a while to get hired as a paid environment, and a lot of them will volunteer because they have to maintain certifications. Every two years, they have to have so much training before they lose their certification.
That's what I was thinking, that sometimes, especially if they continue to go into college, at least they have that.
Yeah.
And that's something
And we, and we get people here like that. Sometimes they come over here and they say, hey, I'm just trying to maintain certs. Any chance I come over and help you guys out? I got two days a month. I'm like, come on over. We can use anybody, two days a month, whatever, take. And some of them end up staying, so.
Mr. Red?
I was wondering if the chief could address, you were here when we pulled out of the MSTU, the county, talk about the budget impact ahead.
Yeah, the, the budget impact for us, other than a benefit to our citizens, not paying an extra tax, was pretty much it. The, the way I understand, and they'll put me on the exact numbers, started off somewhere around fifty thousand, ended up somewhere around seventy thousand is what they were pulling out of here. You guys may know better than I on that tax number before we pulled out. Mr. Banks, I know you were in that meeting, you guys were in that meeting. You guys had like four questions for them to address, and they couldn't address them. And that was pretty much it. They couldn't tell you where the money was being spent, where any of that extra money went, and that was pretty much
Then they reduced what came back to us, right?
Well, they did not reduce us.
Once we sold out.
Um, they didn't reduce us at all at that point. What they did was, I asked them, they couldn't give me an idea of what was gonna happen when we pulled out. But Interlochen had already pulled out, and so I asked them, point blank in here in that public meeting, I said, what, what'd you do to Interlochen? They, you know, reduced their budget by eleven thousand at that point. And so when I looked at the commission, you know, I said, the worst they could do is reduce it by fifty percent. You know, and at that point, they were in agreement, said, help, we would help you make up that fifty percent if we needed to. But as far as I know, they didn't reduce my budget at all. I've not seen any reduction in the budget that I currently have. But that extra money never came in my budget anyway. So that tax money was always on their level. It was never seen in my budget that I get from the county.
But Palacca has a fire fee they charge, and every, every property in the city pays for fire service, because everybody needs it. And they actually use it to reduce their mileage, which is not recommending, but it could certainly help pay for our, our fire service, or base, just a basic service to our resident.
They were supposed to use that, in my understanding, they were supposed to use that funds, those funds, and it was supposed to come back into the city. Is that correct as far as providing, helping?
The initiation of that tax was to fund that paid fire, which is in Satsuma. And everybody wants to know, do we see a direct benefit from that? Absolutely we do. It's a delayed benefit, but we do see a direct benefit. Before that engine went into service, I didn't have backup at all during the day a lot of times. Now, at least we have backup. There's a lot of times over that chart that I showed you earlier on, the calls that were missing and not running right now, those guys are coming down and running the call.
Paid engine means they're paid full-time.
They're twenty-four hours a day, yes, or three, five days a year. Their staff, they hire overtime for the spots, the whole nine yards. That's where the tax money went. But the direct benefit to the citizens here, the commission and myself at that time as well, didn't feel that we were getting the bank for our bucks, what we were paying for. We were not getting what we were paying for. And I still completely agree with that decision you guys made on that. I felt that we weren't getting exactly what we were paying for at that time. We do get a lot of service out of that truck now. In the last two years, it's, it's down here quite a bit on calls backing us up. We get two or three calls at a time there here, and since they split those guys up, which is what I requested when we initiated that truck, was to have two in Georgetown and two in Satsuma, it's helped even more. It's got that truck closer to this side, so we're getting a little more benefit. Are you asking me if I wanna go back into it? That's up to you guys, and that, I don't, I don't think there's a benefit. I think there's other options we could do to maybe help ourselves rather than jump back into that right now. But that's something that we can address with the county at that time when it comes. Because I still, as we move forward with whatever we're gonna decide, I still think we need to do some type of joint effort with the county, is in our best interest, so.
Mayor, subject of funding. So we gave up our participation in the county tax. It's my understanding that the county has a study. This is what the Mr. Suggs told me, that he has a study going out to look at the MSBU auction. Is that correct?
We've been, that was part of the reason that the commission opted out of that as well.
Right.
When they came here to sell that, they said within three years, we'll have an MSBU in place, and it wouldn't be an old boy argument. And after four years, it still wasn't in place.
Right.
We've been pushing for an MSBU through the county. I'm unaware if they're doing a study or not. Last time I talked to Director Grimes, a lot of the county commissioners were not on board with an MSBU. But I haven't spoke to him about that direct issue in probably three or four weeks.
Okay, good. Jerry Suggs told me that he was doing a study.
Okay.
But you're saying you don't have any expectation that that's
I know, the last time I spoke to Director Grimes, the majority of the commission were not on board with the MSBU unless something's changed in the last month. We have, we've discussed a lot of things, but that wasn't one of them in the last month I spoke to him.
And they are looking, but with that said, the county is looking right now at, they're looking at the resources that they're providing to all the communities, not just present city, but all the communities. They're looking at what they're providing and how they can, if they can back off of some of those, and the communities take on those, some of that.
Correct, as, as we talk about financing and everything else, the county, the city provides the day personnel. We have the building and stuff like that. The county pretty much provides all the training, the equipment, the extra trucks, our uniforms we wear, they, all that comes out of that county budget.
Right, but so you're saying the county is actually talking about doing less for the cities?
So the, the county currently pays our gas and water bill, our electric bill, things like that. As a, as a city, I, I was chief probably six years before I knew they paid that. I thought this was coming out of the city. And I accidentally got a bill from the county one day that was sent to them, and I'm like, I didn't know the county paid our, you know, our water and gas bill or our electric bill. But the county pays that bill for the city station.
And I'm not saying that they're looking at backing off of those. I know right now they are looking at everything they're
Director Grimes is going through all budgets, through every fire station in the entire county, and trying to find out where they can save money and spend less. So if you're asking me if I think some things are gonna get cut, I do believe he's going to find some overspending issues and maybe come to the city and say, why are we paying the, the gas and electric bill for your building?
Okay, well, I have my comment about this, and Jason always knows exactly what he's talking about. I am actually less interested as a, to me, it's a less interest to me for our commission in exactly which option Jason would choose. But it seems like we're at the point as a commission where it's our job to figure out how we are going to possibly fund what is needed, whether it's option one, two, or three.
And you have a whole other topic coming up next that is gonna require the funding part of it, so.
Well, I
I mean, if, if you wanna hold the personnel issues right now, we'll get into this, this next part. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely, you go for it.
Okay, the next part, you know, we're talking about building a future for the fire department. What do you guys wanna see as a fire department? Do you want us surrounded? Do you not want us surrounded? Do you want a paid fire department in the future? Do you wanna try and maintain volunteers, guys? That's where we're going. We're looking, my recommendation is to try and get some type of living quarters here. If you have a place that they can come and stay all night long, and is safe, up to code and everything else, you more have to get some money here. On top of that, I've been discussing with Director Grimes about possibly moving the ambulance off of Union Avenue into the city limits, into this building. If we were able to build this and build a ambulance bay for them, we would have an ambulance base twenty-four hours a day in the rest of the city. Now, when they're on a call, it's just like anybody else, they're not gonna be there, but at least you have a twenty-four-hour paid crew assigned to that location. And that is something, if we can possibly make this work, we could get a crew there. So even when the volunteers are maybe gone, if they're not on a call, they're, or somebody shows up, somebody's there.
And that is something that the county funds?
So we would do the whole building.
Right.
They would fund the personnel and apparatus.
Okay.
And there's nothing guaranteed. This is a, a conversation we've had, and he said to me last week, he would still entertain the idea, depending on the circumstances, finances, and everything.
But at the same time, if he built it, they might come. Okay. Are you talking in dorm situations?
I'm talking, I, I have some pictures here of Satsuma Station as well, and I have some ideas here as well. Satsuma, the engine we're talking about, that we funded, they funded with the tax thing, they built a six-person dorm-style occupancy, with no kitchen or anything in it, two showers and stuff like that, fourteen hundred and fifty-six square feet. That building cost them about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which included the generator. I think we could probably do something in that neighborhood as well. I'll have to look at that, decide what we want, get with builders. I think that was way overpriced at the time they built that building. Everybody else did too, but that's who the county went with. It was a county project. They decided to go with that builder, and everybody felt it was way overpriced. I don't know that we can do it cheaper now. It's been seven years, so everything's gone up, so. But that, that's my thing. What we're trying to do is, right now, to kind of give you an idea, years ago, twenty years ago, there was a storage room, got turned into a dorm room, created a living space for the guys. Multiple fire marshals been down, everything else, no problem. Most recent fire marshal come down, it's not up to code, because it doesn't have a second means of egress. It needs a second means of egress going outside. It needs some updates to the station to make it livable for the guys to be in. The guys stay in, on cops down inside the station, you know, with all the open glass down there and everything else, because it's really not the recommended dorm style for us. So what we're trying to do is build something that we can get people in there and have full-time paid crews there as we progress in the future. I, your ambulance, possibly, you know, if you're asking me, I think in ten or fifteen years, you're going to see a full-paid service in this county. I don't think you really have an option, because it's hard to find volunteers now. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like in ten years. Once again, if we get something in process now, it can at least take a little bit of that blowout and at least get some people. The building will be there. It'll be easy to put people in there if the building's already there. To build a whole new fire station is gonna be about one point two to two point five million dollars. I don't think we're anywhere ready for that in even the next five years. So recommending something like this in the meantime to get us through till we can figure out funding source, figure out what the county's gonna do everything for the future is what I'm recommending for this. You get people over here and stay, it'll fill the gaps. I mean, you got, most of your gaps are when our guys leave in the evening until morning. You have gaps in service sometimes. We have guys who come over here and run all night, and we have guys that just can't. When I'm gonna work with my full-time job, I'm gone for twenty-four hours. That's another gap that we have. If nobody's available, that's a gap you have, you know, in the evening to morning. A place for them to stay and lay their head at night, so they don't have to go home, keeps them here and fills that gap, and that's what I'm looking to do. This is our existing station here. I put a little outline in. This is our current property line. We're very limited on where we could build something if we built it. It'd have to go back here unless we've bought this piece of property, but they want an arm and a leg for that piece of property. And it would be wonderful to have this piece of property and be able to keep it close to the station, but I think this is the only option for that.
Yeah, because you're talking about the lot that backs up to Main Street.
Yes, ma'am. That's just right here.
Right, the back area, the back area.
Yeah.
Yeah, this currently, where this line is, is the fenced-in portion of my fire station. So everything inside that line is currently what we have now.
Yeah.
So this is, excuse me, this is Satsuma's Fire Department. This building over here is the old block building. This building here is what they built in the addition to housing personnel. This one, just like ours, had an upstairs area that they were staying in, which wasn't up to code. They tried to bring it up to code. It cost them like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and it still really didn't meet requirements. They were able to stay there for a year or so, and then they had to build this building. So to give you an idea, once you bring it up to code, there's still a lot of issues it had, and just trying to retrograde that thing. So they added this building on over here. It's fourteen hundred and fifty-six square feet, sleep six, has an office, two showers, and two bathrooms. It's kinda how it's set up right now with the generator. There's some code things. It has to be so far from the building. I believe it's ten to twelve feet. That's why there's a breezeway. I have a picture here, the breezeway to kinda show you. It goes between the buildings. Everything's fenced in, now set. So I'm just kinda showing you what they have. This is the other side of it. Very simple, nothing special. It is a, I thought it was a block building. I verified it's not a block building. It's metal stud. Stick-built building, and there's the rear of the generator. Now, part of their cost on that was this generator. They put a thirty KW generator there, and I think that generator was twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars when they hadn't put in. That's way overkill. They could've got away, but I mean, they're running an AC and lights, it's all they're running in that thing. They needed probably a twelve, honestly, to make that happen. So I would include a generator in anything that we're looking to do as well, but it wouldn't have to be near the side.
Looking for expansion.
Pardon me?
They're probably looking at expansion at some point.
No, I think they were, I think they were looking to possibly run both of them off of one, but they have two separate power sources. And so we would be in the same issue, the two separate power sources would do that.
So they didn't build a bay.
Pardon me?
They did not build a bay.
No, because they already had the extra bays here. They had two extra bays they weren't using, so they didn't need a bay. And so we would have to build a bay as well to house that ambulance, or we would have to move one of the county trucks out to put their ambulance in, which is an option, you know. But this currently is the overhead view of Satsuma Fire Department. Give you an idea of kinda what the floor or the footprint looks like, kinda like ours as well on that. You know, funding an immediate plan, MSTU fire tax user fee, American Rescue Act funds, Better Place Plan. There's a lot of stuff going on there. A lot of options we have to, to look into this and stuff. Kind of another little thing to show you what we're doing. Getting ready to go into house fire. I just wanna show you what these guys deal with. That's me right there, one of my other guys. As soon as we walk in here, see how it's getting real hazy? That's the smoke. As soon as we go into this door, that's it. You see nothing else. And you won't see anything. That's it. That's all you see right there, and we're still moving, and that's what we see when we go into the fire. So you guys kinda get an idea of what we're looking at. That, that's the stuff we do every day. Um, that, that's the stuff we do every day. That's what we train for. That's why we do extra training and that's why the guys go to school. But let's talk about whatever you wanna talk about for any of this. Like I said, the funding. You know, the building is not just being built and that's it. Once again, you know, you gotta maintain the building. We gotta look at building something for the future, so there's gotta be some type of funding mechanism to help with this. I know the city can't just afford to throw money at something and be done, even though we have some American Resource Fund or Rescue Funds and some other stuff that we could use. To get the building built, we still have to plan on the budget to, to maintain this building into the future and whatever that looks like. So, um, you guys have questions on that? I mean, the building, I think the building is a key part of this as well as the volunteer. I think they kinda intertwine. Um, they both kinda go hand in hand and get people here and keep them here.
What would the county do with the Satsuma facility if we did an ambulance down here?
What would they what?
What would they do with that Satsuma facility?
The Satsuma's not going anywhere. That is a full-time.
An additional one, the ambulance?
The ambulance is out on Union Avenue, out by the high school.
Oh, that's right. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
So, so an option, um, I haven't discussed with Director Grimes. Um, that might save us money. I don't know if we could do it and if he would do it, if he would put it in our older fire station bay. Is move that tanker, the county tanker to that location, move the ambulance into the city, build a room. That's something we haven't had the time to sit down and discuss yet. I was thinking about that this week as I was preparing this. I'm thinking different options to do. That can save us money on a bay if they're willing to put it in that bay. And then we could retro the end of that, come off the end and put a walkway through from the building right into the bay where they could get to their truck first. Different options here.
Also, we've, uh, we had talked to Mr. Grimes. And I talked to Charles about this. He had mentioned something about the fact that there were grants available for emergency management. Operations.
Yes, like an E O C type center.
Yeah.
That was something we looked into definitely, you know, a, a couple of years ago and stuff. A lot of those are, uh, multi-government. Bound, when you start looking at that, it's not just fire or just EMS or just police. It's usually like a police-fire-government style complex to get that grant. That's something we can look at and we would have to definitely work with county on that. Um, possibly to use the police aspect, maybe get it to move forwards too, I'm not sure.
Looking at all of our options.
Absolutely. Like I said, the, the funding part is, that, that's always the hard part, you know, that's why you guys have the tough job of trying to figure out. How to fund the budget for the city and everything else and try and maintain services and, and this is not easy. I've been trying to get volunteers for years. It's very, very difficult in this day and age to get a volunteer. Um, if you can get them to look up from their phone, even talk to you for a minute, that, that's the hardest part. Hey, look up here just for a second, please. I, I wanna, hey, look at this fire truck. They, they don't care, you know, this is, this is one of these numbers and stuff. Um, kid, kids aren't as impressed these days as they used to be about all the stuff. And the physical labor involved, a lot of people don't wanna do the physical labor. They're so used to doing technical labor on a computer and stuff now. Um, they just don't wanna do that side of it and they're, they're straightforward with me. Ah, I don't wanna go, so I don't wanna do all that, you know? And that's fine, it's not for everybody, but it's very difficult to find somebody who wants to volunteer their time to go put in. And that's just a one-time upfront there, the hours, five hundred hours. Every year they're probably doing another additional hundred hours just to maintain their certifications, not including. Volunteering time plus coming to trains that we're doing on top of it. So they're putting in a lot of time and effort. And, you know, it's just really hard for them to maintain the families and everything else.
Commissioner Burton, you have any?
Well, it seems like we're kinda really tied into, uh, Rockburn County. Wants to kinda do for their future, our services. Is that what I gather here?
I would say we can either wait on them or we can do something ourselves, at least to help in the meantime. Right now, you're getting a lag in services because we just don't have enough people. It is just that simple. You got Monday through Friday pretty much covered from, from nine to five, you know, nine to five-thirty area.
And I think I understand that for, for the immediate, you know.
Yeah.
But I was just looking at the whole picture where, you know, all of a sudden we're building, uh, you know, to, to. Make our space bigger and larger.
And that's why I don't recommend building a whole new station right now. Just build in addition to supplement that. Because I still think even if they got MSBU today, it would still take them probably three to four years to get the infrastructure set up for it. And get all the Manning hired. I mean, they're, they're hiring Manning left and right right now and they're still losing them. They hired fourteen people, lost like nine of them in, within a month. They're going to other places. They're having issues just like everybody else. They've increased their pay there quite a bit. And they still can't retain the people, just as they're all just going somewhere else. They're all going to Jacksonville, they're going to Orlando, they're going. You know, St. John's County who has a lot more money to offer and those guys are just going everywhere to work. So they're having the same issues. Like I said, if you did MSBU tomorrow, I think it's still taking five to ten years to get everything put in place to do something with it. Um, I think you're looking at at least a five-year timeframe before anything's gonna happen on their side. I may be wrong. They may get. Millions of dollars and be able to enact something within two years, but.
Let, let, let's say we, we wanted to, to move forward and, 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 you know, build all this. How long is that all gonna take us to, to?
It's gonna take about a year probably.
About a year to, to get there.
Mr. Redd, what do you think for the building and stuff? Is it about a year? Probably if, if we decided to move forward with this in a month, it'd probably still take about a year to get all the. The plans and reviews and the building. There's a lot of design going into, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be short time for us as well. I mean, everything's gonna take time.
And regardless, I mean, regardless of, he's got to do something about the living quarters.
Yeah.
He has to do something about his living quarters there for this.
I mean, if we want people there, uh, something's gotta change. We can throw money into the building. We talked about this, throw money into the building there. Hundred and some thousand dollars at the end of the day, you still owe it to sleep to two people. That's as big as we can make it. We can't make it any larger than it is. Um, it really doesn't suffice of what's going on. Um, and you could throw probably a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into it, just to. Really not gain anything but strength or system and an exit, you know?
And we still got the kind of debt to.
Offset.
Offset to, to look at, um.
Yes.
See how the, the, the kinda commission is gonna act to whatever plan we come up.
And that's kinda why I recommend some of this, you know, let's give it till January and see if we get any movement on their side and see where it's gonna go before, I mean. I wanna, I don't wanna just say.
Well, that, that's my fear is the county.
Yeah.
I don't think it's necessarily us. It, it's the county because the county seems, you know, at times they, they seem to be.
Right.
Talk and kind of no action.
The ball's in your court at this point. I mean, I, I wanted to throw out some options, some recommendations and let you guys know where we're at. Do we have volunteers? Absolutely. We have great volunteers. We have wonderful volunteers that have a tremendous amount of training under them. And they do a superb job every single day that they're here. The problem is getting them here. On a more frequent basis. I have so many people now that's moved out of county for work. It's limited. I might get them one day a month, I might get them three days a month.
And, and, uh, you know, it says part of the discussion should include the fire service fee. Could, could you explain? What, what, how, how much of a service fee are we gonna be charging everybody?
Well, we, we have to look at what was, you know, that didn't make enough, make a difference. Uh, we have to do an analysis of what we can charge. They said that'd be our own. MSU basically.
It would be your own MSU, whatever you would set, we would figure out a budget and set the fee off of whatever budget you would set. Yeah, we would have to figure out a budget, what budget we're happy with and then set the fee off that budget.
And everybody, nonprofits, everybody would, there's a structure on the property, you pay it, because you need the fire service.
And I, and I think if they don't get the MSBU at the county, they're gonna be looking at something like that as well because. They are having such an issue with personnel and manpower and everything else, they have to have a funding mechanism moving forward. And so like I said, if they don't do an MSPU, they're gonna be looking at some type of service fee or user fee or whatever it is as well.
We would be in charge of that, that fire service fee.
Who would collect it for us and then, but send back to us by the county.
Um, ma'am, can I ask you a clear mind question? Does, we need to know if we're gonna figure out how to raise money. I wanna be clear on what we need to raise. So it's my understanding that your recommendation is two things. One, to do the additional payments for the volunteer service that comes out to roughly, I'm not looking at that sheet. Minimum of fifty-four thousand eight.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's the maximum.
Minus the thirteen, minus the thirteen we are.
That's the maximum. The, the total would be fifty-four, like one fifty on that.
Okay, so that was the, one of the less costly options. Okay, so I'm saying ballpark fifty-four thousand, but you're saying minus thirteen?
Yeah, because currently in my budget is thirteen thousand dollars for volunteer incentives.
Okay.
And so we would do away with that program and install this.
So it makes that number not seen as, as, okay, but it's a number and so that number would be roughly forty, forty-one thousand.
Yeah, forty-one thousand.
Okay, and that would be on an annual basis to try to increase.
Yes, ma'am.
By volunteers. And then the other recommendation is. The actual, uh, dormitory.
Some type of dormitory living quarters, yes.
Which has a large price tag that would take about half of the. Uh, American Rescue Act funds and would also have, um. Operational and maintenance cost going forward.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I believe with the Rescue Act funds and some other funds that we have, we could almost completely cover the cost of the building. It would just be the maintenance and. Stuff in the future.
Well, I never think the building, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, I mean, this is something the commission has to talk about because, you know, I saw you put there better place plan funds and. There was another fund you put there. You know, we, we do have other needs. And right now, we fund quite a few, um, equipment needs for the city out of the better place plan. So, uh, and one thing I did not talk about that was on my list with goals for Mr. Redd's six months. Um, is the issue of grants, because we have missed some grants, but somewhere we need to look back to that. So I guess what I'm saying, so your recommendation would be minimum forty-one thousand a year volunteer payment and then figure out how to do the building. My recommendation to the commission is, you know, we need to run some numbers. It's my understanding. Um, that. You know, we have, we would actually be able to raise a fairly small amount of money from our existing. Buildings, but we don't know what that is. Is that what you're saying, Charles?
Yeah, we, we would, we would find out what we needed and see what the fee would be and you'd have to determine if you were, if you wanted to impose that fee.
Right, but, but the other thing, and I have one more recommendation. Really, this discussion. Is a little bit past time where it needs to be because my strong feeling ever since we pulled out of the MSTU. We pulled out of the MSTU and then as a commission, um, I don't think it's, I don't think it's in the best interest of. The municipalities of the county to just wait to see what the county does. I, I think just like with other issues, um, we need to be asking the county. To, you know, or rather we need to be telling the county what we see our needs as being, because we are part of the county fire system, right?
Correct. I will say at this point, to, to date, pulling out of the MSTU of the county.
Right.
Has had a zero change. Nothing's changed.
Jason, I'm going past that. What I'm saying is, we, we took, that was, that was an action that we took as a commission as a whole. We analyzed it and we were left and we said what we wanted the county to do and that was about two years ago. What I, what I'm saying is that we need to be, I think, more proactive. Because we're part of the county fire system. We, the city, Crescent City provides funds that benefit the entire county. It's a, it's a mutual.
If you just reinstated that fee on the city side, you have an extra seventy-two thousand dollars or whatever.
Okay, well, this is money that we don't know, but I think it is very important. For us not to wait and see what the county does, but to give them our input as. As to what we think would benefit us and stop counting.
Okay.
So, two, two points there.
Okay, Commissioner Burton, I just, um, you know, just looking at it.
It's a lot, yeah.
Well, in, in simple terms kinda thing, um, basically right away we need to give you the additional funds. Uh, salaries to bring more people in.
Try and get the people here.
Correct, so, a- and that's really gonna be an annual cost. Okay, so that's something that has to be adjusted every year.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the other thing is, the building is kind of a, I'm gonna say it's a one-time cost to get the building built. Okay, and that hopefully, uh, can be funded through, uh, what you're saying, our.
American Resource, Better Place, other, you know.
Di- different places where we can grab that money. But then after that, it's the facilities. Um, right now that Cutman County, I guess, is paying, uh, they're, you know, they're paying for the water and whatever else you're using there. But I think that we would have to then, uh, take that in hand and also budget for an annual. Uh, type payment for all of the facilities for that building moving forward and, and that would give us complete control of.
Correct.
Our fire department.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so, so, so that's really what we're looking at, you know, is, is this what we want? Do we wanna, you know, go to build the building, uh, and then take on the actual, uh, the annual cost of. Maintaining it and the annual cost, you certainly need to take on the annual cost of the new, uh, volunteers coming in. Cause we need that.
Yeah, that would also house the county animals. So like I said, so what I'm, what's, what I'm looking at is maybe they keep paying.
Well, maybe.
They're doing, I mean, there's things we can work out, but you can't plan for it, absolutely.
You can't go with maybe, you just gotta say, hey, are we willing to take this burden on as a city and, and as a commission? And do we feel that this will, uh, benefit us? That's the question.
That's why I wanted to throw all this out here so you guys see the total picture.
Commissioner, back.
Yeah, I think our first step is that we need to pass this, uh. Whether fifty-four or fifty-eight.
Fifty-four.
Yeah, uh, we need to get that so we can get, uh, so we can be protected by that umbrella. I probably think first, yeah, yeah, but we need to be focusing on that right now.
And tonight, and tonight, just so everybody understands, tonight's a workshop.
It's a workshop, right.
Tonight, we're just discussing our options. We still have, I think, some more information that needs to come before us, before we make. Before we make some of these decisions.
The, the volunteers, you know. You know, refund this program that we're looking at here. I think seeing that and seeing the turnout that comes from that increase would also give you some idea of. Should we build a building or not? You know what I mean? Um, I think you should build a building for future use anyway, whether we get turnout or not. I think it'll draw that ambulance in here to give you that service. And it'll give you a place to put, hey, people, even if the county decides, hey, on the road they're gonna do a paid service, so you guys do a paid service. Or a joint paid service. The building at some point is gonna have to come. That building, the fire station currently sits in it, was a storage facility. It was then created into a automotive shop that was never meant to be an automotive shop. And now it's a fire station, which was never meant to be a fire station. Um, some of you that were here before, remember, we lost half our roof and lost a tremendous amount of office stuff in, in the hurricane. It's not code rated, it's not up to snuff. There's a lot of stuff. You guys have a lot of money tied up in equipment and, and everything in that building. So eventually, at some point, we're gonna have to build a new fire station. Um, many of you are here and I'm not gonna dredge up a lot of the past, but I've been asking for over ten years. To put budget stuff in, put lines in my budget for a building and for a fire truck. Because a new fire truck is gonna cost you half a million dollars with no equipment as well. So things are very expensive and we gotta plan for them. And so I just want you guys to know that that building. Is, you have a few more years out of that building, but you're gonna start having some issues with that building because it was never intended for that. And we're starting to get some roof leaks again and some other issues. So that's for the future to discuss that, but in the short term. Some type of living quarters that is safe for the guys to be in, um, would definitely be recommended as well as, you know, offsetting instead of the project.
Commissioner West?
Um, I think this is very important. I think we need to do this because I think eventually we're gonna end up. Paying for firefighters like big cities do. And we need the place, excuse me, sign us also. We are in the process of redoing this building.
Yes, ma'am.
This next year. During this time, let's get you ready to go to take maybe. Some of our funds in your direction this coming year after we get what we need done in here. Because you have planning time, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
And looking at funds we can tap into to build. Or a dorm and maybe another bay and, um. Possibly a future fire department somewhere. How does that sound?
Uh, I'm good with that. I just, I couldn't, I can't remember. I know you and me have discussed, Mr. Redd. Is there a timeframe on the American?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four.
Pardon me?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. So that, so that's the timeframe we're trying to work on. So, you know, there's, I mean, we have some time, but just like I said, is, if we start it today, it's gonna be a year before anything comes to fruition and stuff.
Okay, I think that would be a good. Okay, I think that would be a good time for us to, so that we can divert some of that money that we've been putting in here eventually towards the fire department.
Commissioner DeVito.
Yeah, I, I have a question for Charles. And then, so most of what I've read about the American Rescue Act funds and your memo are that somehow you have to tie your expenditures to the effects of COVID.
Yes.
Is that true?
Other than water, sewer and broadband.
Okay, but so what I'm asking is, is that true for the fire station? And if so, does that limit how much of American Rescue Act funds we could allocate to the fire station?
Well, I believe the fire, the, the ambulance station is a, is a qualified expenditure, because it'd be providing transport to hospital or readily available for. Our residents. And we responded throughout.
You have to tie it in, you have to tie it in as an ambulance service. I mean, you have to tie that ambulance incentive, yes.
That's what I'm asking. Would we be limited or denied in any way?
Well, the, the response that we provided for COVID ties it right in. I mean, we responded throughout COVID.
I'm asking, I don't wanna know what the rationale is, but I just want the short answer, because I've read about sixty or seventy five pages of Treasury regulations.
Yeah.
And so I just want the short answer. They're not going to tell us, no, is what you're saying, that we qualify.
Yes.
For this particular year.
I believe so. That's the way I interpret it.
And how, so, and we have some of the money and this is, this is not a reimbursement program. We actually get to spend the ARPA funds. We get to directly apply that.
Yeah, we had a half of it in the bank already.
Right, but what I'm saying is, so we get to spend that and then, but we also have to justify it, correct?
Yes.
And if we, if we fail on that justification, then there's a potential of a climate.
They, they would, we might have to pay it back, right, yes.
So we have to somehow, and how do we, you know, because I've looked at various resources, how do we actually get verification of that, that we do qualify?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything like that. A lot of communities are asking, there isn't something where we submit our, our, our request and then they tell us yes or no. I think we just have to, there'll be some justifying paperwork we fill out and send in, how this is related to the COVID response.
Right, well, I guess what I'm saying is, if we were a big city, we would, no offense, Bobby, we'd have a really large legal staff and we'd have outside counsel and we'd have a lobbyist and somebody would get us an answer. The small communities don't have that luxury. So, you know, we have to do the best we can unless we can find a good authority, like maybe, you know, from the league of cities or whatever. I know they're going to release lists of what other cities are using their Rescue Act funds for. But you, you're fairly confident that this, this isn't allowed. Okay, so, uh, but, and that, but just my other concern is, you know, Crescent City residents pay county taxes. And it is my concern, as I said before, that we not sit back and just wait and see what the county does or certainly with as small revenue stream as we have. I think we owe it to our residents, just like we did when we looked at the cost benefit of the MSTU. I think we owe it to our residents to make sure that the county does its part and that we benefit from that. Because all the money that we spent benefits surrounding South County. Is that not correct, Jason?
Absolutely.
Right, we're, we're.
The benefits of that, and all the money that we put into that also, it was for my entire fire district, not just the city, but the city residents paying their portion.
Sure, right, but what I'm saying is, we, we back up other.
We do.
Fire districts, including the county. So to me, it's our responsibility to our residents to stay informed about what the county is doing and let them know that we expect, you know, the maximum that they can possibly provide. I, I don't want to say, sure, we'll just pay for our water. I want to let them know we have an expectation that we're doing our part and they do their part.
Well, that's part of, as we move forward, if we, one thing I would recommend, it was like I mentioned this in the commission meeting that night as well. We, if we were to work on getting that ambulance brought in the city limits, one recommendation I would make was to require those people on that ambulance to be fire certified. Because right now, not everybody on the ambulance is fire certified, but if they are, that gives us two extra firemen here as well. So, there's, there's options that we can look at to, to try and help ourselves out in the community, other than just bringing an ambulance into the city. So we pulled out of that, how much did we save each resident?
I think it was around two hundred and something dollars. Judy and Harry, y'all have been here all time. How much was it on your bill?
My taxes didn't go down two hundred dollars.
I would notice that if it went down two hundred dollars.
I, I don't know that, yeah. I guess we need to look into that and see what, what, you know.
But, but the, the bottom line is, we all paid the fee, but a commensurate amount did not come back to this location. So, that, that's a whole other separate issue. And Jason, you're saying we can raise seventy thousand dollars from what fee?
Well, when we were in the tax, when we were in that NSTU tax.
Yes.
When, at the end of it, at the end of the fourth or fifth year, whichever it was there, they, Patrick told me it was a little over seventy thousand dollars that was coming from that tax from the Crescent City city limits.
So you're saying if we apply that tax only to.
If you just applied that tax right back the way it was, you would be, you know.
Okay.
Somewhere in the neighborhood.
Well, and there's, and that did not include nonprofits.
Correct.
That's the MSBU.
Correct.
That would do that. So we need, it sounds like we need some funding options.
That's what I would recommend to you. If you remember, we just do the budget process without new revenue, this will be a new recurring cost.
Yes.
The station, we, we have this gift of the ARPA we can look at, you know, one-time thing, but ongoingly, we, we'll need a new revenue stream and to grow our fire department. Here, we, we really do, the status quo is not gonna do the trick.
Especially when you get the, we expand down here, we have these other places that are wanting to expand.
Yeah, we, we've got a lot of stuff. Like I said, over the years, I mean, most of the people I've either lost to retirement or to find work somewhere else. The entire county, the entire country is having the same issue. It's not unique to Crescent City. It's unique to the entire country this time. I have friends in other states with the fire department that have the exact same issues. You know, the volunteer places around this country, especially in the state of Florida, Florida is really getting hit hard. They're drying up and going away. And a lot of people are struggling to find work right now. And so they're moving to wherever that's at, find work, and you lose the volunteers. Like I said, I'm a mayor, this, this is a workshop. I just wanna present to you guys some of my thoughts and, and options here that I thought that would benefit us coming, you know, currently and towards the future. And I look forward to hearing back from you guys with recommendations or how you want me to proceed or more information or, or whatever you guys would like to do to move forward in the future. But like I said, I would definitely like to try and procure this in the future and we gotta start now, so.
Yes, sir. Jason, uh, don't, uh, if, here's your hour, fire rates, two five, insurance policies on each individual home.
The one seven, so your, your insurance rate?
Yeah.
That money, I don't know exactly how that tax money works. I know it was called one seventy five money. And that used to go to benefit pension and other stuff. There was, there was a lot of funding to that.
No, maybe I didn't ask quick, uh, ask quick, right? Yeah, it, it, I know it was something about the fire.
We get the savings on our insurance, is that what you're asking? Yeah.
Yeah, I, so, right. So the ISO is the one that recommends anything over seven hundred calls a year be a full-time fire service. Yeah, okay. Um, so what we do is we work with the county to get the ISO. Right now, we've maintained our ISO with, I've lost manpower. And to be honest, if they come back and do another ISO inspection in the next, if they was to come back this year, it would actually, your rates would probably go up a little bit, because we're down on manpower. Manpower is a critical part of that. Everything else, we're still maintaining the status quo, we're losing manpower. They require a minimum of four people per fire call to get any credit, just to give you an idea. And that's very, that's almost impossible to make it in our current status.
But would we even achieve that with the option two that you recommend?
More, more than likely, we, we would, we would meet that more often. We're doing, I'm doing some work with Director Grange right now to, the county's been working on a thing on their end to come under one umbrella as the whole county, to help benefit everybody under that ISO option. He's not quite there, but it's getting really close. So I think we're gonna be able to, to meet those requirements with their assistance. But by ourselves, we don't meet that requirement right now and it would be very difficult. But with an option where we're bringing people over here more often, you'd be more apt to meet that requirement than you would. I mean, we're putting two, a lot of times we're putting two and three on there, but that fourth person is really hard to get right now. Any other questions?
I'd just like to see you begin to move forward with plans for our building.
Okay.
And cost and whatever. I, I don't see any way out of this. I think we're going to have to go in this direction. And the more we delay.
So what we're going to do to maintain?
Yeah.
We gotta do something to maintain.
You gotta, there's gotta be a funding mechanism to maintain.
Well, that's part of our plans.
So the, 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 the world looks like.
What is it gonna cost to maintain?
Yeah, we need that cost, clearly.
Right.
That is a very important part of the.
Well, a lot of that, we won't, we won't have a cost of maintenance until we know what a building would cost and everything else. And we're gonna have to get plans drawn up and the whole thing.
I'm talking my current now, the, uh, to get the paid volunteers out there, so we can maintain until we get to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I, I knew what you meant. Ms. Judy was talking about the building and that stuff as well.
Well, Commissioner Burton.
Um, exactly. What, what she's saying is, we need to move forward. We need to get somebody to tell us how much this building's gonna plan. How do we move forward to, to see what it's really gonna cost in the end? In other words, the plans of the building and how it's gonna be built and how much all that's, you know.
It's gonna cost, I mean.
It's gonna cost us money to get that over.
So we, we need to figure out how much it's gonna cost so that we can understand how to make a decent.
Right, we'll have to, we'll have to contact some builders and get some plans drawn up and they're gonna possibly draw up plans. And I, I can work with Charles on that. We would do it, like we did for this building, we do an RFQ for architecture services.
We, we probably need that for our next meeting and, and so we can kind of get this thing kind of settled.
Well, that's gonna come up, I think, in our next discussion.
Our next workshop.
In our next workshop that we're gonna have, I mean, at seven o'clock.
Yeah, the one coming up.
So that'll, that'll come up and we'll address that. And I think, you know, and I, I understand, Commissioner DeVito, what you're saying about the county, but I do think we also have to be very, we have to step lightly with that as far as where this is. I, I'm sorry, but it's a partnership that we have. Don't you agree, Jason?
At this time, you definitely have a partnership and I don't think we can afford to go it alone at this point.
Yeah.
Um, I would love to say yes, and if you guys come up with some type of funding mechanism, that might be, that might be different. Um, but like I said, the majority, we have, we have an engine, we have a boat and we have a utility vehicle in there. Everything else is the county's equipment.
And they own, don't they own the motor that's on the boat?
They own the motors on the boat.
So, you know, we just have to, I just think that, you know, that we let them know and move forward. And, and Charles, this is something, wait a second, this is something.
We, we had a motor, that motor died and we had to get a new motor. It was purchased from county funds. City didn't have the funds for it, so it came out of county budget. But that free motor was just a haul. No, it was a motor. It had a worker on it and that motor died, yes.
Yeah.
And so we traded that motor.
And then, okay, as we go forward then, I think, Charles, this is something that in working with you and the chief with the county and, you know, and making sure that we are represented, absolutely, absolutely. We have to represent our citizens there and get the best thing for our buck out of the county area.
If you guys come up with any questions that you think of, um, I don't know how, if you wanna email them to me. If you need questions for the director or for the county, I can go direct it to them if you come up with something. I'm just, shoot me a memo or, yes, sir.
Uh, uh, let me ask you this question before we leave. Now, we got what we need to maintain. People always maintain. Uh, I know we gonna have to do something about a building in the future.
Yes.
But we left hanging right now. We got to do something to keep it flowing, keep, keep the shift going. Now, that's what I'm trying to.
That's my recommendation for the fifty four thousand to increase, to try and bring those people in. And like I said, I wanted to give you guys until January to try and figure out, can you afford that in the budget?
Okay, okay. There you go.
That, that's what I was trying.
Charles and Robin are gonna work with.
I would love, this breaks, I would love to have it tonight. I would love for you guys to say, hey, I can give you that tonight. I know that's not feasible. And it wouldn't be responsible of me to ask you that. Only give you some time to, as you move through your budget, to find out exactly what money is your where, to see if it's affordable to put in there.
That's what I'm wanting. Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Well, I have a question for Charles or Bobby.
Commissioner DeVito.
So with respect to an MSTU or whatever, so are we not able to, is that something that we can only put in place for the, for the following budget year? Does, does that need to be in our term notice, et cetera, et cetera? In other words, is that not an option mid-year after we pass our budget?
I, I don't know. I've asked our attorney to do the research on that process that Paul Ica went through, how long it took, what was necessary. I, I don't think we would have those funds available in the current fiscal year.
Yeah.
It's likely it will be implemented in the following year.
Cause my understanding is you can go down, you can't go up, correct?
This is a separate fee, yeah.
See, who's telling you the fee?
Just for having a property and a structure, wouldn't be an increase in millage.
Okay.
But except if you have, that, that's for a tax. But if you have a fee, can you impose just a flat fee mid-year?
He, he's gonna find out.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna look at all of that option, okay. So, because that makes a big difference.
Yeah, it does.
That's between, you know, it's our budget here is January to September, so, okay.
Anybody else? Thank you guys.
I think, good, thank you, Judy did a good job.
Thank you.
Good job, I appreciate.
I, I will get in.
Everything you and, and, and all of your team does.
I appreciate that, thank you. They're hard workers and just trying to keep them here.
Right, right.
Commissioner DeVito tried to talk me into becoming a volunteer earlier today. Or knows that I want Chicago Fire and I, no way, especially if he got me up on top of one of those ladders, I would be.
Chief, I assure you. Yes, sir, I will say that, leave it for you.
I think Jeff is back and he'll hear.
We can, we can.
Hey, guys.
You want to ask him something?
You, or would, would he want to, would he like to speak? Do you wanna introduce him, Jason? To those of us that.
Uh, this is, uh, Jeff LeClary, he's one of the lieutenants on the fire department and we, we've been seven years, sorry. So many years now, lose track of time, it goes fast. Um, he's one of them and also had a job traveling and was working out of the area for a while. So he's back now full-time and, and it'll definitely help out in that aspect. Um, but when guys like him are gone for work, month, two weeks, four months at a time, it's very hard to fill that gap.
Right.
Yeah.
He does, he does a lot and I see a lot of what he does. Thank you very much.
Yeah, when he's here, he knows.
Working all the time, yes. Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. I didn't wanna put you on the spot, because, you know, but thank you for coming. Okay, with that, I'm gonna close out this workshop. Not the workshop, I'm gonna take a recess. Take a recess. Anybody who has to go, take care of you. Workshop back to order. Seven o'clock. Now we are on our American Rescue Act funds. Mr. Rudd?
Thank you. So I, I put together a presentation just really to give you some, to show you some options as part of just the discussion. I know we've talked a lot about the ambulance structure. I think it's a great option, that's a fine show. What I would really wanna get, I know we can't decide it tonight in the workshop, but at the next commission meeting, I would ask you for direction to choose something, knowing that it's not set in stone. So we'll do a budget amendment, we'll allocate the funds to that as an example of it for ambulance facility. And then we'll start down that road and, and if we discover on the way, wow, we can't do that. You know, that's took a lot more money than we thought. We can then reset. We have, we have two years to spend the funds. So we may, um, you know, go another road. So I just want you to understand, it wouldn't necessarily be set in stone, but at least give us direction. And we'll get them, we'll get an architectural firm and they'll do an analysis and they'll come back with options that were located on the property. All those decisions can be made and then you'll decide, let's do it and let's, let's build it and spend the money. So, um, as I mentioned in your packet, the, the eligible, if we can replace revenue that we lost, if we can prove that our tax revenue was down um, over in a, in a defined period of time, which I, I looked at it and didn't really look like we had, so we lost much revenue. We could also do it on, and certain industries were hit, hospitality and tourism. So for instance, we could build outdoor dining areas to.
build outdoor dining areas to allow a larger seating capacity because of the effects of COVID, people not wanting to die inside. Uh, we could pay premium pay for essential workers. So that's where you could, um, if you had your fires, your medical crews on, on working all through the pandemic, you could give them premium pay. Um, we can do investments in water sewer and broadband. This is the most liberal sort of use of it, uh, just any water sewer and broadband projects. Uh, you cannot use the money to offset um, or delay of taxes or tax increase. You cannot use the funds to put them into a pension fund, and we have to spend the money uh, by, in the end of calendar year twenty twenty-four. So looking at possible things that that I've thought about or heard discussed, ambulance bay and dorm, design our water main projects, I'll show you those. We have some wastewater improvements. Um, and what I mean design is just get them shovel ready, which would give us more points when we apply for a community development block grant. And then we could spend all the grant funds on construction rather than design and construction. Uh, and then uh, park enhancements is another idea, getting people outdoors um, where they can be, you know, socially distanced in a park and so forth. So uh, we talked a lot about the bay, out of bay, the fire station, the common ambulance, and it was a great idea you mentioned. Maybe we could switch the tanker truck and uh, use an existing bay. Um, and this, I would really recommend, part of the scope of it would be to review the entire facility, perhaps some uh, minor upgrades to the existing facility for safety, for um, just anything that might be included in, in, as well as building, a secondary building for a dormitory. And uh, the cost of that, we have to come back to you, based on Satsunwa, that was about um, half or more of the, of the total funding we would have. So designer water projects, um, these would be shovel ready to increase our ranking for grants. Um, there's not enough money in the, these funds to pay for construction. We would just have plans that were ready to go for these projects. So the Main Street design, uh, Main Street Water Main, on Main Street, the design fee is, is approximately a hundred and one thousand dollars just to, to get it engineered and designed. Prospect Street Phase One, uh, which is a portion of Prospect, estimated to be eighty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. I got these numbers from our uh, engineering firm. And thi- this is the breakdown. This is Main Street, the water main, uh, design, topographic survey, permitting, and geotechnical uh, with a construction estimate of uh, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So that would be, we'd go after grant funding for the construction portion. These are the kind of things we would spend the money and not see anything out there. It'd be tough. Um, the Prospect Street, again, the same breakdown design, topo permitting and geotechnical with a construction budget of about three quarters of a million dollars, which I think C D B G is usually about seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that would be more within the line with the grant. Uh, septic, uh, septic to sewer projects. This is um, a range. Uh, Grand Rondo is where we, we, we've identified that in our plan. A hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars is the estimate for the plans for that design and engineering. And then treatment system improvements, um, a range of a hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty. I'll show you those. So for Grand Rondo, to provide sewer in there, get it off of septic, they're looking at a million and a half dollar project in there that we would, you know, have, be ready to go. We look for grants. We probably have to phase that.
Let me interrupt you anyway. What houses are you specifically talking about on Grand Rondo? What area?
I, I don't know. I have a map. I could show you that it's outlined.
It's on west, it's on west Grand Rondo, correct?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're talking about the north side of the lake.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm with Commissioner West. For all of these street projects, like Main Street, Prospect Street, Grand Rondo, I would want to know more specifically where we're talking about.
I could show you.
That would be very helpful, right?
Uh, and then our, our water treatment, uh, talking about high service pump replacement and motor control improvements, area replacement, storage tank rehabilitation, and north elevated storage tank controls. That's also, uh, they're giving just a range of three quarters to a million and a half dollars. Uh, again, we would just design those and then look for grants. So it's, it's not as much of an impact out there as, as the, the, the ambulance station. This shows all those fees. Um, the money we're gonna, right now, we'll put these in our grants. We'll go for a grant, but this funding is an opportunity. So I wanted to bring it up. You can see that would eat up the first year's allocation and then some. And in other words, uh, park enhancements such as uh, outdoor exercise equipment, like uh, field rehabilitation, restrooms, those kind of things. Those typically uh, do qualify to getting people out of outdoors.
Hi.
Yes.
So basically, those are the, the things to talk about. Um, and if there are other ideas, we'll have an opportunity for public input. Uh, at the, at the uh, commission meeting, if you want to come up with ideas, you'll have to think about them. But my request is that you um, put us on a path that we can then uh, we'll bring you the budget in, likely in November. Put it in the budget and we'll begin working towards that to come back to you with the specifics. Uh, for instance, for the ambulance station, we would bring you back a potential design and, and like we're ready for this building. You decide at that point, let's, let's go for it, or.
Okay, Commissioners, you have some questions? I'm gonna start at this end. Commissioner DeVito?
Start at that, I guess, and we can go. Oh, Commissioner Burton has a question. Um, okay, so I have, um.
We're down the line, so.
Well, I have a couple of questions about the recommended, um, basically all the design projects for various water and sewer. Um, and I don't expect you to tell me about um, any one specific one. But, well, for example, Main Street, where Ralph Nette, um, is that in danger of failure? Is that why we have that on there? That, that's for the water main?
It is, I think it's, uh, I wish I had, um, a couple of words right here. It's a, I think a larger water main, replace the water main that's there for a larger, to increase um, the capacity, the pressure. I'm not that familiar with it, but we have a, a list from years ago of, of these projects identified, so we can go after funding.
Okay, on Prospect Street, like on North Prospect, South Prospect is okay. My understanding is as far as the size that we have, but North Prospect, you have Commissioner Burton, they have two inch lines, so there's replacement.
Go, there's a lot of projects. What would certainly help me, and I don't know about the other commissioners, but to have them listed in order of um, need or priority, it would, to me, it would help to see those prioritized.
Okay.
Because I don't think we'll be able to do all of them, and if any of them would be something urgent, you know, that would obviously be farther up. Um, and then also, you know, maybe a little more specific, like is it North Prospect Street, South Prospect Street, or both, or you know, North Main Street or South Main Street or both. So that was my question about the uh, the utilities. Um, I noticed, you know, we've had a request in the past and people use the ball fields. We've had a request in the past to do the lights. I don't remember what the, we actually had an estimate for the lights for Harry Banks Park. Do you have a figure for that?
I do not. I do remember in listening to old um, meetings, there was a discussion. I don't remember the price.
Well, it was presented.
It was, and it was, there were two different options. I think there, the one that finally came in was well over like a hundred and fifty-six thousand. But they also thought that seventy-five thousand, but um, Mayor Hill has, I've spoken to Mayor Hill about this, and he has some option opportunities possibly that we could look at, that they've done at Palacca, where that's to significantly reduce.
Well, what, the reason I asked about the cost of A, we need to know the cost, but B, I was looking at some other parks, um, listing on their website and what they spent for various better place planning. Um, and they had much lower figures for lights, much lower.
Mayor Hill said the same thing. He said for what they've done too, so.
Right, but um, that has certainly been a very heartfelt request. So to me, it would be great to have a realistic figure. And then, um, one thing that I wanted to break forward to the rest of the commission. Um, I talked with, uh, and when I get time, I will do an actual report about this. But I talked to the people in um, Gainesville who are in charge of homeless funding for our area. And one of the things that they mentioned with American Rescue Act funds, it is possible to use American Rescue Act funds for homeless services. You can actually contact with a nonprofit. Um, so, one thing I thought we might want to consider in light of recent problems that we've had is maybe was, if we could find um, a nonprofit to contract with, and if we could define what services we would want, that we might want to segregate maybe twenty thousand dollars or less to obtain some services in the next two years that would um, help us alleviate those kind of problems. So.
Okay. Commissioner West?
I'm good.
You're good.
Well. Which I own it, about the fire department, I won't. That I think is very important. Then, under spoke field. Not there, it, it, the park on Grove.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I, I think really, uh, those lights when we, when the young lady first came to us. We had uh, way underestimated, and I think we were kind of out of date with this. They wouldn't pose. Couldn't find out that they gotta have a mail pose. It, it got out of price, very high, something like, uh.
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, hundred and eighty some thousand dollars. I sure would like. But, but I, I think that's on there though. I think you got that.
It is.
It's parking under park enhancements. There are different things that we could do in our parks.
Yeah, and, and that particular. And, and the fact, I'm really concerned about that. Uh, I think that could be something that we need to jump home and sue the person.
I was just gonna say, I took out the seven hundred and sixty-eight, I put at the top of my sheet, ambulance structure, four hundred thousand dollars. I just, I assumed we were probably taking that right off the top.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we definitely need it.
Commissioner Burton. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Banks, are you done?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
He, when he sat back, he was done.
He sat forward, if you know that he's the author of this. Reading body language to make sure he does, because I'm not gonna get into his time. Commissioner Burton?
I don't know, I was uh, thinking about all this. And number one is, I'm not sure how old all the water and the sewage and, or sewer systems and all that's very, very old in Crescent City. And uh, right now, we're starting to locate overall, and so, so that may come back to haunt us maybe in another five years when things start to break underneath again. We have to start, you know, drilling through our new pavement uh, to fix up some of that, so. I don't think that that was necessarily done right to begin with, but I'm not complaining. But I, I do think that that's very important that we focused on that. Um, lengths for a ball field, I'm, I'm not really that much for. I would rather see us put our money on projects that uh, are for all of the citizens here in Crescent City. I mean, we pay taxes in Crescent City to have services and have food services here. Uh, the water treatment is very important. Um, you know, we, we're, we're just laughing, but I have a two-inch water line that comes down our street.
On top of the ground.
Yeah, on top of the ground. And when Nate has his irrigation on, I can't take a shower. And it's like, you know, this is two thousand twenty-one. So, so these things, you know, they do have to kind of be addressed and, and like I say, um, you know, I like the idea of the ball field lights. I think that's a great idea. I just don't think it, it's gonna fit in, in this budget right off quick. Uh, the other thing is I'm a person that believes in page and play. Uh, I think if you're gonna set up lights, there's ways now where you set up a credit card, and when people want to use it at night, they put their credit card in for so many hours and they get to pay the bill. Um, so we, we, we put, put it up, but then whoever's using it pays for it. And so, uh, tho- those are things that I think we need to come into two thousand and twenty-one in the future, uh, start talking in a different type of way. Um, Splash Park would be fun. It, it would include many, many more people and, and kids. I mean, I see grownups playing on the ground a lot. Everybody gets and has some fun in Splash Park. Was that?
It'd be fun.
You know, and so it just, it just has more people, you know, kind of playing and all that. So, so anyway, these are just some of my ideas. Um, but the other thing that uh, I have a question is, we're trying to do some redesigns here in City Hall. And I don't see why some of this, because it would be kind of COVID, uh, entitling COVID, our bathrooms, you know, the no-touch toilets, the no-touch sinks, the no-touch, when you walk into bathrooms, no touch the light switch that come on automatically. Um, that's just an example. Um, just, I, I, I think that there's some things that we can use that money for to actually, this whole desk where I, I sit on, there is lap almost, you know, we're supposed to be six, six feet, is it? Yeah, and, you know, things like that could, could actually happen here. I think we, we could use that money for, for things like that. And like I say, um, it's kind of where I put my money.
You could also direct us to, uh, kind of taking off of what Commissioner DeVito said. Uh, we'll put four hundred thousand dollars towards the ambulance station, knowing that we may need more or less, we could put um, a hundred or two hundred thousand towards design of a project, of an infrastructure project, and then it'd be a hundred thousand for uh, a, a type of light, lighting fixture at the park and, and set those up. And then when we do the ambulance thing, if it, if it just cleans us out, ends up being more expensive than we anticipated, we would, we would reconsider that list, but we have until twenty twenty-four to get to those last items. So the ambulance would take up this, the current, what we have in the bank now, but as we begin design and, and uh, uh, project design, we'll begin spending those funds, and then by the time we get into construction, we'll get our second allocation. We finished the, the building, and then we've got the, we, we paid for the design of uh, a water main project, just looped it one. We designed it, and then we, by then, we've got a good price on lighting, and we go ahead and solve lighting, and then we see what's left of the funds. Make sure we get it all spent before the end of the process. That's another approach, knowing we may come back and hunt, uh, as we get through something that took a lot more or a lot less money than we had allocated. But the point is upfront, we allocate several projects in a row, kind of chronologically, how we'll approach them, with the ambulance being first. And then by the time we get it constructed, we'll know what we've got, and we can reassess the rest of that list of two or three items.
Okay, and you can prioritize, you can prioritize for us in talking to Keith and our engineer.
Yeah, they can pick the most critical, or rely on them to give me the most critical.
And that too, that if we're gonna put the money towards that and talking to Mr. Fox as far as, you know.
That would be our C D B G allocation.
Exactly. You know, does this really, you know, what are the chances of us being able to go forward once we've done this? And we're shovel ready. I mean, is there, you know, so that's, that's another thing we have to take into consideration in spending this wisely. So Commissioner, um, DeVito, did you have a, a question?
I do. And Mayor, I think you raised a really good point about um, not only the order of priority, but the order of likely to uh, get, of being successful with it, that, that's like, definitely important. Um, I wanted to be sure, for the uh, fire department structure, are we allowed to use American Rescue Act funds for all phases, like even the design?
Yes.
Okay, so there's nothing really associated with that, that we can't pull from American Rescue Act funds?
Correct.
That's, okay, because given the state of our budget, that's kind of important. Um, just wanted to understand that. Um, okay, that was what I had.
May.
Okay.
I have to do a break. I talked to Jason about going ahead and looking at what things are gonna cost definitely. And bring that back to us because I think we need to deal with that.
Oh, and that was the other. Sorry, so, Commissioner West, may I?
Commissioner, yeah.
Um, Jason said he really couldn't give us the cost on the ongoing maintenance of that building, but it would seem to me that we could have a ballpark figure of what it would cost to operate, in other words, what it would add to our operational budget in the future. Even if it's not to the penny or the ten, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, yes, yes. We need, we need that to get started, I feel like.
We were gonna need that.
Absolutely.
Right, because that's a recurring. Because that's a recurring, it's.
Right, we need to have some idea of the.
We're establishing, right, we're, we're creating a recurring, we need to know what that recurring is for.
Right, even if it's within twenty thousand dollars.
Something, to get started, correct, right.
Correct, yeah, that's it, we.
Okay, we have to, um, Charles, with this, I guess you'll come back to us. When do you want to bring this back, or?
Well, I, I'd like it in October, you, you decide, you vote on, uh, the allocation of the funds, and then we would have the budget amendment in November.
Okay.
And that, November is when I hope to have the, the annual adjustment.
To know everything in.
Yeah.
Okay, do you, can you think you can get that information for everybody in enough time, that they can go in and kind of set their priorities to?
I think so by next Thursday, you, you can tell me, um, what you got from, uh, Palaco Mayor.
I'll get with, I'll get with Mayor Hill and see, yeah, it wasn't anything like what, what they had, he has a, a gentleman that he said could, you know, just do some.
That lawful.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was out of, that was out of, out of, Commissioner Burton?
Um, just one more thing, we've put together all these, uh, all the dollar amounts and everything. Um, could you also improve other areas where we may be able to pull some dollars to close the gaps on some of this? I mean, we're looking at four hundred thousand per fire, we're looking at close to half a million of these projects that you're talking about here. And I know we're gonna have to pick and choose, but I know we have some funds out there in other places. Um, and we're just to, you know, if, if we're close, you know, can we grab fifty, fifty K? But can I just grab fifty K from the Better Place, uh, fund or something like that, if we have to get something done, or?
I could listen.
I, I don't know if you, no, I'm kind of trying to say, but, um, we do have other avenues, I think, to get some funds, so. So we might want to take the, the whole picture.
I'll, I'll recommend a project, a, an infrastructure project.
Yeah.
But then.
I don't know if that makes sense.
Yes, yes.
Anything else, Commissioner Banks, are you good? You're good, Commissioner Burton, you good?
I'm good, see?
Okay, so everybody, Charles, do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
That's all you have for? We're good, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Seven twenty-six.
Right, and Charles, thank you very much, this was a fun show, we're actually back to you.
I better get sent home watching TV.
Yeah, and I still get home in time for.